... indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask just a pause for a moment of silence for Dr. Molnar's mother who passed away a couple days ago. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beister?
Here.
Dr. Feig?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Vance?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, citizens comments?
There are no citizens comments cards this evening. Next Thursday at the voting meeting, you'll be asked to review and vote on the approval of the minutes of the planning meeting of September 6th, 2012, and the regular meeting of September 13th, 2012.
Question?
Will you incorporate a copy of our plan that we presented that night in the packet that you would keep in your month?
Yes.
Finance?
At the voting meeting, you'll also be asked to approve the financial reports for September 2012. Due to the early date of today, these items are not yet available, but they will be included in your packet next week.
All business.
I have a question, Mark. Can I talk about finance?
Is it related to the treasurer's report of bills?
No. You mean that if we want to talk about finance, the only thing we can talk about is the treasurer's report and bills payable, Mike?
Well, that's where we're at right now.
I know you're there, but does that mean that's it for finance?
That's what's being discussed right this minute.
We've already moved on, so I've assumed you were done with it.
Want to talk about it at the end of new business? Dr. Curtis?
Okay.
All business to P W two in New York.
Yesterday, at the stadium, there was a rededication of a World War II honor roll monument that had been at the old junior high, East Huntington High School, in the old junior high site. Once again, Mr. Ken Culver, who has been involved in a lot of these projects, took the leadership in restoring that. To the best of his knowledge, at some point in the 1970s, apparently, the memorial fell into disrepair and at some point was removed. And he was able to locate the names of the old memorial, 71 original, and then also, because the original dedication was October 3rd, 1943, there were Alverton veterans that then graduated from high school and became service members and served overseas. So another 22 names were added, total of 93, and trying to keep with the tradition of the original. We did it on October 3rd, same time, 11:00 in the morning yesterday. Former board members, current board members, I saw many of you there. It was a very dignified, solemn event. Something that just touched me beyond no end was the fact that we had two surviving veterans, whose name was on the memorial, that were present to unveil, and one being a woman, who was a former first lieutenant, and the other gentleman being someone who was a long-term board member of the school district. So it was very touching, very emotional. Our band was there, board members, administration, and many community members were there as well. And I just thought that represented our community in South Moreland at its best. And I'll pass around the flyer that we passed out yesterday of the program and the names of the veterans. It's pretty neat, pretty special.
Can I say something? Tim stepped in for Dr. Molnar, and he read the names on the memorial, and he did a beautiful job. You really did, Tim, with a lot of respect. I mentioned this to Josie, and it's just something I thought about. Why didn't we bring some of those kids over from the high school to see that? That was such a special lesson in history to me, that, you know, I really wish our students, besides the band, had been there to see it. Wouldn't that have been nice?
We talked about it, and just logistically with the lunch shifts and kids, you know, one teacher would be bringing them out, then they'd have to be returning to a different teacher, and just, we didn't want kids standing for an hour. And, you know, it was just a call that we had to make. I agree.
Was it televised, Tim?
I don't know if anyone did. I think there wasn't video, not by us.
No, okay. It'd be nice to show that on Channel 39, if this is possible. It was just wonderful. It was just absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, I agree with you, and if we could find out who was videoing that, maybe we could.
Maybe the kids could see that in history class, I was thinking.
New business, discussion, Mr. Nash.
Yeah, I just want to mention, we're going to have Vince up to the podium to talk a little bit about it, but the National Association of Secondary School Principals have a Breakthrough School Program that was initiated in 2007. They do it in partnership with the MetLife Foundation. Breakthrough Schools recognizes 10 schools across the nation each year that have significantly improved student achievement. You have to be a high-poverty school, 40 percent or above, and have dramatically improved student achievement. At the present stage, South Moreland Middle School is a national semifinalist for the award. And last week, one evening and then the whole next day, a team from the National Association of Secondary School Principals came to and spent time in South Moreland Middle School evaluating the school. Vince, if you could come up to the podium, please, and just take a couple minutes and tell us about the actual visit.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to share with you our experience. As Dr. Scott was saying last Thursday, we were visited by the Associate Director for Middle Level Services from the N A S S P, and also the Director of Program Development for the same organization. They met with one of my team members, team leaders, on Wednesday evening, and then they were here, as Dr. Scott had indicated, the entire day on Thursday. I have to, I believe wholeheartedly that the experience was a very good experience for everyone that was involved. I know that the students in my building really responded well to the fact that the individuals from here, they actually commented to their teachers that they were very proud to be a part of this process and to be considered for the process, so they did share that with our teachers. Basically, during Thursday, these two individuals had free reign of our school. They went everywhere into all the classes. They visited any of our team leader, our team meetings, any department meetings. They sat down with a number of our students and had discussions with them. I brought in members of the community that met with them also. So it was quite a comprehensive situation where they evaluated not only what's actually taking place within the classrooms, but they got input from our community members and our students, and they did have discussions with the administrative team and our teachers. I think probably the biggest indicator of the entire day was, obviously, we had to submit a lot of written material that would validate or back up our progress. But I think what really spoke volumes at the end of the day, when they were concluding with me, they said that everything that we had written in all our proposals, everything that we, all the information that we had turned in to them, some schools, they've written about it, but they have clear indication that it was taking place in their schools. But they told me that everything that we had submitted, everything that we'd indicated that we have done in our schools, they saw it in actual application and multiple times taking place within our school. So they were very, very complimentary of what we're doing in our school. And I do have to say, just to elaborate on what Dr. Scott had said, 100 nationwide, 154 schools had applied for this award, and we were chosen as one of the top 10 through the process. And even within that process, they indicated that we were very high within the selection because we obviously met a lot of the initial criteria that they were looking at. So from our experience, I think it was a very good experience, and I'm very proud to be a representative of South Moreland Middle School and the faculty and staff that are there, and the students. The students really represented as well that day. So I was very proud to be a part of that experience.
Vince, when do you expect to find out if South Moreland Middle is an award winner?
They indicated to me in our concluding remarks that by the middle of November, first week in November, the middle of November, the latest, that they would indicate to us if we won the award. And then, obviously, there would be some recognition, that we would be allowed to be attendance at the national convention, and we would be recognized at the national convention as one of the top 10 schools in the nation.
Where's that at?
This year, it's in Washington, D.C. There's also a $5,000 grant that goes along with it. The school would be featured in the association's monthly magazine, which is Principal Leadership. And then they would also, the school would also be expected to participate, partner with N A S S P throughout the year in programs that benefit, in this case, all middle-level education. So, you know, we feel really good about being a national semifinalist, but I know we'd feel a lot, lot better if we are an award winner.
Yes, and also, once again, elaborate, if we were chosen as one of the top schools, as Dr. Scott had said, we would then also, there would be an expectation or the opportunity for us to be mentors to other schools in an example today. And once again, I would think that would be a tremendous opportunity and a privilege for us to be able to do that to our fellow schools and educators.
And we were informed that at this point, only one other Pennsylvania school has received the honor.
Up to this, from all previous years up to this date. And I was out at least, it was a charter school.
So out of the 10 schools, do they pick which ones make it or don't make it, or is there like a top three or top four?
The initial process was 150, I think it was 154 schools applied, and there was a very strict type of criteria that they used to evaluate the applications. From those applications, they picked the top 15 schools, but only 10 of those, the top 10 schools, were the ones that they were actually going to do the visitations. Obviously, they allowed a little bit of a comfort zone in case one of the schools that they were visiting did not measure up to what they actually stated they were going to do versus the actual performance. So, you know, there was a pretty strict criterion that we had to follow, align ourselves with whenever I was initially submitting the information to them.
My question is, in November, could all 10 schools make it, or just a certain number, or how does that?
No, it would be the top 10 schools in the nation that would be recognized.
They intend to choose 10 schools, 10 each year?
Yes, sir.
And they're not ranked among the 10?
No, they did not indicate any ranking.
You're on your breakout schools.
There was no indication of ranking.
What on the collaborative learning, was that kind of new to them, or, I mean, I'm assuming that the model was, yeah, that was a big part of the discussion?
Yeah, I don't know. In the past, I was not privy to what they've done historically, but I think the collaborative work was probably a very big indicator of what they were looking for. It was based on, and I do think it might be in your bracket, in your packets, breaking ranks. That was a national, you know, publication. So I do think that collaboration is a big part of that, and it was listed as one of the three majors, they counted the school, one of the three major legs of what they were looking at for the schools.
Was this based on P S S A scores?
I know. It was based on how we collaborate, our TV processes, what we're doing with our students. They went into all classes, they looked at how we were addressing the needs of our inclusion students, our learning support students. They basically, they were pretty thorough in their evaluation of our school.
But yes, to back up Dr. Feig, to get to that level in the application process, the data they used to indicate that we were, met the criteria of being a dramatically improved school was our P S S A data, reading, writing, math, science.
Congratulations.
That's very good.
Very good. I'm just very honored to be a part of that.
C W C T C, bro.
Months ago, the board was informed that our Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center were interested in some much-needed renovations to their facility. At the time, as it is quite a commitment on all the member districts, you folks said, hey, we'd like to get some information, hear from some folks. And tonight, some representatives from the Votech are here, and thank you for being here. And the three gentlemen that I met before the meeting, Mr. Brad Elwood, the director, and I just want, in case you folks come up, Mr. Jeff Deasy, the Assistant Director, and the principal, Troy Collier. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. The information that you had asked about is being distributed at this time, and again, thank you, and take you away.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. My name's Brad Elwood. I'm the director at Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. And as Dr. Scott introduced my Assistant Director and our Principal, we also brought along tonight, in case you have further questions, representatives from Chevron, Tom Almer and Sean Deegan. And we also have a board member with us from the Ox School District, Carl Spooty. And we brought these people along so that if you have technical questions that we can't answer, they can to help you understand what I'm about to speak about. This is just information so that, you know, you guys have something to think about. Central Westmoreland Career Technology Center, a building that we currently are in, opened in 1975, and we're having some issues regarding the roof, the mechanical systems, which would be the HVAC systems, and the boiler, and the piping, and the electrical systems. They're all original from 1975. So the roof is original, and so are the other systems. And the issues that we're starting to have is because of age. The roof is very, very close to not functioning. We are starting to have some small problems with it. We have been fortunate that it has been well-maintained by our maintenance staff over the years. And, but, the life expectancy is coming to an end. Actually, it's over the expectancy of the roof, so we've been very fortunate that we haven't had any major problems or issues. Our boilers are original. We cannot get parts for them anymore. They're very worn and deteriorated and very close to, you know, they need replaced. They're not going to be able to pass inspections pretty soon. And then we wouldn't be able to have heat in the building. And the same with our electrical system. It's very old, outdated, and hard to get parts for when things break. The first sheet there is the one I'm going to talk about, and then Jeff's going to talk to you a little bit on the second sheet, which is more on the financial part. But if you look at the first sheet there, we originally started out trying to go through Plan Con, and as you know, Plan Con is not in, is kind of in dire straits, not being funded by the state, by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. But there is an alternative route out there called the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, or Act 77, and now it's also known as Act 39, where if you can partner with an energy savings company and show energy savings across the project, they help you get the things accomplished that you need done. And we need repairs. This is not a renovation. We're not going to be changing anything in the building, updating the building, so to speak. As a matter of fact, if you came to the building after this was done, you wouldn't even be able to see the work that's been done because it'll be above the ceiling, and it's the roof. So all the stuff is need, but we like to call the heart and lungs that need repaired in the building. As you look at the first sheet there, the first half just talks about the lighting. Lighting, one way to save energy is to upgrade the lighting. And the total cost for upgrading the lighting, as you can see there, is $333,000, $32,432. The other big expense, or probably the biggest expense, is the mechanical systems. And you can see the different breakdowns there. We did put this RFP out back in April, and the two final companies that gave us the specifications and the information that you see here, the one that was the most comprehensive, the one that had the best request for proposal, that was by far, compared to the other company, most diligent and dedicated in what they were proposing, was Chevron. You can see with the mechanical, the heating systems, boilers, those kinds of things, that's almost, you know, $4.4 million. Roof, again, original roof needs replaced, and that comes to almost $2 million. And then the electrical system, you can see the different breakdowns there. Big thing with the electrical system is transformers and motors. If you take those old types of electrical components from the 70s and bring them up to the more high-efficiency components, the same with the heating and ventilation system, you can save energy. And so that's the plan. Total cost of the project is $9.142 million. And I know it's not a good time to be asking for money, but I really, really don't have any other alternative. If any of these systems fail, I would have to call Dr. Molnar, say, you know, I might not be able to keep your students in the building because I don't have heat. Today, we lost power for about an hour. So they're starting, we're starting to see wear and tear in the science because the building is old. And so these upgrades are needed. I know, like I said, it's not a good time to be asking for money. We just wanted to present this information to you, and in consideration that since you are a, South Moreland is a member of the nine sending districts that have come to us, ultimately, it's your call, and it's, you know, your money that helps run our operation and educate the students around career and technology education. So if you have questions after Jeff's done here, we have professionals here that can answer questions for you. We'll try to do our best, but that's why we kind of brought along the pros too, so if you really have in-depth questions, they can be answered. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Jeff, and he'll kind of explain the financial side for you, and I truly appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for offering your time to us this evening so we could present this very valuable information. It's all about the education of the students, not only in South Moreland, but the entire scope of the consortium group that is involved in Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center. If you refer to the second page of your handout, which is the one that's grayed out and says draft, we have to start with the basis points to be able to begin this discussion, to talk about what actually the project, beyond the scope of the project, but how it's going to be funded and where the resources will be coming from. We took a look at the entire financial picture. We started with the 2011-12 unaudited, and I must emphasize, our audit is not complete, so these are unaudited numbers at this point, for each of our sending districts that participated in the school last year. And if I may draw your attention down to the South Moreland component, you can see that we have an unaudited number of 78.851 students attended C W C T C last year from your district. Our total enrollment for last year was 943-plus students for a combined total between all of our districts. District membership fluctuates year to year. That is not a static number. It's very kinetic. Some years, it's higher, some years, it's lower. So the superintendents, in a meeting in late September, decided the most equitable way to portray the cost would be to combine a three-year rolling average, so it would best reflect the average of each district for their student attendance over the course of time. If you look there, again, South Moreland had approximately 7.5 percent of the total budget expenditure, looking at the second column in, and that would be the obligation then to the project, approximately 7.5 percent. If you look out to the third column, which is on your extreme right, that would be the total district cost on a yearly payment over the course of 15 years. That would be the cost per year for 15 years. Keep in mind that that cost would possibly go slightly up, slightly down on any given year, based on student enrollment as a total of C W C T C, as well as your individual district. The other thing that I must draw your attention to, as a matter of discussion, this was based on 3.25 percent interest rate. Right now, that's on the high end of the market. We did some probes into the financial market via Chevron, and at the time, back in late August, early September, there were interest rates at that time as low as 2.35 percent. That's why this document before you this evening says draft. Until memorandums of understanding and resolutions are passed by the boards and signed, we will not be able to get a hard, concrete number that you can actually say, that's my number. Secondly, with that particular issue, Chevron is doing a value engineering study, and if you look footnote down at the bottom, it says N T E, not to exceed. The project that is currently in scope and sequence is N T E at $9.142 million. If we can extract some additional costs from that budget through value engineering, that will be taken off the bottom line of the project. So there is additional potential savings from the value engineering piece. So there's a lot here on this particular page. Generally speaking, the first double-starred footnote, I'll draw your attention, the average cost per ADM will increase approximately $816, based on the figures you have before you. Again, that could be slightly up, slightly down, and that's per student cost. The superintendents have had concern about Frazier's participation in the project and how that will look. That has yet to be determined. There is an envoy group that will be attending and meeting Dr. Blazovich and Frazier in the upcoming weeks to forward that discussion with that district. That may impact the overall cost. The district's annual payment will fluctuate, as I mentioned before, on the three-year rolling average. I also indicated about the interest rate. So there's a lot of things that we are in the process of working to nail down, so there's a concrete number. The other thing that I will tell you, that does not indicate any remuneration that you would typically receive from C W C T C on a yearly basis. That is just the flat-line cost less any refund that has been the past practice over the years. So your actual cost may be little to nothing. We've equated that cost in some scenarios to a car payment, depending on the district size and the district obligation to the project, to slightly more than maybe a small house payment. But it's all relative to a lot of factors that we can't exactly nail down, and that's why we're presenting this information tonight. So you at least have a framework, a concept of the project in total, as well as a potential financial implication and how that relates to South Moreland School District. I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Carl Spooty.
Can you?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Can you say what you just said again, that it will cost us nothing?
It could potentially have zero net cost, based on the refund that you would typically get from C W C T C. And the other component of this is the Energy Savings Act. We don't know how that all will roll out. If we save money on electricity, which is part of the process, then there won't be a complete upcharge for the project that will be taken. that will be taken off the cost of the project. Deferred maintenance programs will be taken off the cost of the project. And that's where the project cost is fluid right now until we get absolutely all the data that we need. But it could be a very minimal cost.
Okay, because I did the math, and it's eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars over a fifteen-year period.
Yes, ma'am.
We would be paying. And you're saying we won't be paying that. I just am lost.
Explain how they pay so much, and then we get a refund, and now we'll be going towards that.
As I understand it, every year, we do get a refund of, let's say, our overpayment, you know, our, instead of them keeping a fund balance at the VOTEC, they just refund that excess back to us every year. If I'm correct in hearing what Mr. Giezi is saying is that instead of refunding us that, let's say, fifty-three thousand dollars a year, they'll just keep that then and use that money to pay for the project.
Well, then, in fact, it does cost us that money, absolutely. There's, that's, that's not fair to say that. Because if you owe us money and you don't give it to us, we don't get the money. The fact that you keep it and use it for something else doesn't mean we're not paying it because that's our money.
The additional cost would be more reflective, ma'am, of my comments. Yes.
That's eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Right now, you know, we owe about forty-some million dollars on the building you're standing in. And that mortgage goes beyond this one, so we would be paying two mortgages. And even after this one's done, we're still paying for this building.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a concern.
And I completely empathize. And Mr. Elwood had indicated that timing-wise, this is not the greatest time. However, I will tell you, if we have system failures and we don't go ahead with this project, the system will need to be repaired, and the cost will be the cost. And Mr. Spooty, I believe, will speak to the issue of the roof in itself, if it's outside the parameters of this particular project and what potential ramifications that that could have financially.
How many schools, how many schools have agreed to this so far?
Currently, Pen trafford has already agreed to it. And we are, just like we are with you folks this evening, we are in the process of presenting the information to all of our consortium members during this month. Our last meeting will be the twenty-second of October, and we will have every board presentation concluded at that time.
Is anybody refused so far?
No. We are the third presentation that we have made, and we haven't had any refusals yet.
Bill, what was our refund last year?
I think it was around sixty thousand.
So at the beginning of the year, they give, let's just say, they give you a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
It's part of the deal where it's beginning. And then whatever's left over was always refunded.
It's ours. And they're going to keep it instead.
Right.
So it does cost us, Josie.
To pay for this.
It does, does cost us because this money does not go in the bank.
He would have used that sixty thousand to pay for something else.
Absolutely.
But instead of doing that, it would have, it's going to pay for this.
For fifteen years, Josie, that's the thing.
I just want to say, we sat at the meeting whenever they presented this program to the superintendents and the business managers. And what I took away from it is this. You're right that we are paying a mortgage for this building to educate our students in. We're also educating our students at the VOTEC. The phrase "kick the can down the road" has been used. You know, for years, the can's been kicked down the road to address the systems in the building. And I think what Mr. Giezi is saying, the end of the road is within our sight. And something needs to be done to bring this building back up to standard.
Bill, that's eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and five.
Well, I understand that. It's a lot of money. It's an awful lot of money. But yet, you have to do these things. If your roof is leaking, you can't go home every night when your roof is leaking. You have to put a roof over your head.
I think it's too more of a safety issue and health issue, like in the welding units. Their suction is not working properly, and it can hurt their lungs as far as. So it's a health issue as well, and not just even making it pretty. I mean, it's a health issue.
It's not, no. Like, they have said before, it's a heart and lungs.
Right.
It's not, it's not cosmetic. Mr. Spooty's going to speak. You were a former welding teacher?
No, I'm a HVAC.
Okay.
General maintenance.
They were saying about the welding shop, the kids in the welding shop can't learn the modern techniques of welding because the ventilation system there does not allow them to use the modern materials. It's just, there's a lot of things that need to be done.
Well, one good thing is there's no change orders because they, whatever Chevron says is your price, you have to go. Is that my, was I correct in understanding that? So we can't go any higher than this. The only thing it could go is down because of the interest rate, or maybe Frazier coming in on the board would bring the cost down. So it can't go up at all.
I have a question. Why was everything let go to the point that now everything has to be done? Why wasn't it done periodically as things reached the end of their life cycle?
The only thing I can say to them is, the previous directors, that's a good question. Why they didn't address those issues, I do not know. Especially with the roof, but all the systems are old. I think they knew that it was going to cost a lot of money. I don't believe they wanted to do what we're having to do tonight, and that's come and ask, you know, for help, basically. And I'll be honest with you. It's been, it's also eloquently placed, "Kick down the road." And guess what? The buck's stopping with me, Jeff, and Troy, basically. I don't know what else to say. This, Dr. Fike, it is a lot of money. I understand that. The only nice thing that I can say is, you have some partners that are helping to share it. But good, good point. I can't answer that question. I honestly don't know.
Are there things here that are priorities that can be taken care of in another's hand way?
That's a good question, and that's a nice transition.
Why don't we get to the pool?
All right, I'm Carl Spooty from Yawk. I sit on the Yawk School Board and the VOTEC Board. I was fortunate, one of the kids back in nineteen seventy-seven, to put my feet in that school and go through that program. When I came here in nineteen seventy-seven, I came back several times later. And when I got on that board, I walked in the building, it was the same-looking building. The building's in a beautiful, it is in perfect shape on the outside. The question, or the answer to your question is, if it's not broke, who fixes it? It is where a lot of, a lot of people go down over the years. If it's not leaking, we don't need a roof. The reason the roof is in the shape that it is after thirty-seven years, they've done maintenance from nineteen seventy-five every year since then. What they do is, when I say maintenance, in the October, when the driest part of the season is, they go up, they have a roofing company come in, they infrared the whole roof. And what they're looking for is hot spots, cold spots. And what that indicates is how much insulation gets wet. Once the insulation gets wet, it now becomes a leak. Over the years, they've put in patches on it, and they've done it in certain areas where they needed to. The roof is past its point now. The roof typically lasts around thirty-five years, that type of roof. The HVAC system, the boilers alone, they've been there since nineteen seventy-five. They're hot water boilers, they're casted. They do the exact same thing. They bring a company in, they x-rayed the boilers, they check the castings on it. Right now, there's, there's hot spots in the cast. And what that means is, it can, one of them boilers can crack at any time. I've talked to the maintenance guy over the years, I've talked to him again. They've done everything, primitive maintenance of getting to keep this, and it's not been broke. But the problem is, it's to the point where now it's going to cost you is an LNI inspection, which is labor and industry out of the state of Pennsylvania, for the boilers themselves. They're telling me, and I've seen documentations, that the boilers won't pass LNI inspection this year unless you put a ton of money into them. And then, if you put a ton of money into them, they're thirty-seven years old. What happens if it cracks? You just, you can't come in and weld cast. The ventilation and the welding booths alone, they were the best technology of that at the time, nineteen seventy-five. They're losing, just, their squirrel cages is what they are. And they get out of pitch, they don't draw enough CFMs. And if you can't get enough air away from the kids and the instructors, they can't weld nonferrous metals, that what is required in a welding program today, which is stainless, monel, inconel. It's, they're going to suffer, or we can't put them in that, in that situation. There's some liability that the proposal shows, from, for the HVAC alone, from the boiler to the rat, everything is being replaced in between. There's asbestos, it was back there in nineteen seventy-five. They've been, they've identified it. It's inspected yearly. But if we can get rid of it, this is the time to get rid of it so we don't have any more liability issues. Because abatement alone is, is cost dearly. The other thing I found out that, I was here in your school, at the high school, in nineteen ninety-nine, when they did the remodel. I was, I was one of the companies that actually hung the ductwork over there. We hung over five thousand feet of ductwork alone in there and put it in the HVAC system. That's what we need to do for educating our kids. Remodel the insides on what you don't see. And unfortunately, it's, it's not like nice cabinets. It's, it's the heart and lungs that they keep talking about. The water tire itself, the cooling tire itself, they gave a brand-new chiller for the air conditioning. The water tire alone costs the district almost thirty-seven thousand gallons of water. Why? One float, stuck, seedy water dumped on the back street. Nobody was aware of it. The new technology that's being, and it's, and it's not Cadillac. It's necessity that in today's, in today's buildings, especially in commercial buildings, that the control system, the savings alone that you get in, all the thermostats are going to be located in the school, and I'm sure you got them in this school here, is programmed so it's night-setback. So weekends are not running seventy-two degrees in the summertime and seventy-four degrees in the wintertime. You raise the setting, you lower the settings. The savings alone, the maintenance, I spent five months in this book, looking at this book. I'm, it's just what I do. I, like I said, I've been in the business since nineteen seventy-seven. My father was in the business. I planned to be in the business. I run the crew right now. I have fifteen-hundred pieces of equipment alone behind a fence that I take care of. So, I mean, we're not, they're not asking, and we're not getting what we don't need, is what, basically what it is. If we had to piece that out, the roof is coming in a little under two million dollars. If you had to piece it out, the roof alone would cost you over three hundred, well, three point five, three point six million with the square footage and what we're, what they're, what they're giving us. So, and the other advantage, not only we get the savings in the consumption of gas and electric, we also get it in man hours for how many times, for how much energy it takes to fix the equipment that you have. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Just remind me again, you, you're a member, you would be a member of the Yawk School Board?
Yes.
So, and, and again, your, your business is in this area?
Yes.
And say again what that is. In, in air and heating or in plumbing?
In heating and air conditioning.
Yeah, yeah.
I work for Bechtel Marine Propulsion Corporation out of, out of West Mifflin. I've been self-employed since nineteen seventy-seven, so I do this on the side, commercial and residential. Like I said, I've been in that, I was in your school in nineteen ninety-nine, working for a commercial contract. That's, I've been doing that for the last twenty years. I've been around general construction. I worked for a roofing company for ten years, bending all their metal. So I know a little bit about some things.
Is this prevailing wage stuff?
Yes.
It is.
Thank you.
So you, you would like for us to possibly vote on this as soon as possible so that we can get everybody, all nine districts, all nine districts have to say yes?
Good question.
But just five districts have to say yes?
Yes, good question, Josie. Our plan is, as Jeff said, is to get around to the rest of the school districts and present this information. According to the Articles of Agreement, all nine sending districts have to pass this with a vote of at least five of your members in the affirmative. So five from this board and five from the other boards, for a total affirmative vote from all nine districts. And then your JOC representative would come to our board meeting, and I have to have all nine JOC members in the affirmative representing you to pass this. I'll be honest with you. One says no. Dr. Scott, I might be calling you when something breaks. I can't be, I mean, that's the honest truth.
We, we have the smallest percentage of kids, apparently, that attend the VOTEC school. And it's an interesting thing that we have that seventy-eight point eighty-five for the ADM, and so does Greensburg Salem. But when you look at their three-year rolling average, it kicks it up way up, up to seventy-one thousand. What makes you think that over the years, they're going to continue to have that three-year average?
Well, that's the reason for the three-year average is there might have been fluctuations where some of the districts had higher enrollments. And so you don't really see that, so their, their percentage might have been a little bit higher. But what happens is, is by doing that, or I guess I should put it this way, by staying relatively consistent with the numbers that you send to the Career and Technology Center, your payment would stay consistent. If enrollments go up, essentially, it would cost a little bit more. If enrollments go down, it may cost a little bit less, or a little bit more. But if everybody tends to keep the same amount of students that they've sent over the years to the school, then the payments roughly would stay about the same. And then the other thing that Mrs. Kaufman mentioned too is, is Frazier's not in this mix because they are not one of the consortium schools. They come to us on a tuition payment basis. So, and they typically send around, they fluctuate to, like everybody else, sixty to seventy students. So that payment would be added on to this, so your cost would come down a little bit from that. But it really depends on just the enrollment.
Do they have to agree? Frazier, do they have to agree?
No.
No.
They're not, they're not a consortium district.
They can continue to send on a tuition basis?
Correct.
But if they, if they do, you would charge them accordingly to what the seven schools here have agreed upon?
Good question.
They're just not a part of the decision-making.
Correct. So as the costs go up, they would, they would pay that, that tuition rate, yes. Or if the costs go down, they would pay that tuition rate.
Once they get in this, do they have to stay for a certain period of time since they're getting in on this program, to pay the cost?
That's a good question. As of right now, according to our solicitor, because they are not a member district, no. They do not.
And then they jump to?
School code does not require that they have to be part of the consortium, and so there is no obligation. You are correct. They could pull out. That's a possibility.
Then actually, we're not guaranteed anything?
Not with Frazier, as of right now, no. We are going to work with the solicitor, and the, and the superintendents are discussing this, that could there be some kind of memorandum of understanding that they, we could hold them, so to speak, their feet to the fire, right, to be involved with this for the next fifteen years? But so far, what Jeff and I understand from our solicitor is... But so far, what Jeff and I understand from our solicitor is, right now, her recommendation was no. But the, the sending, the superintendents do want to discuss that. Good question.
I just wanted to say one last thing, my heart goes out to you because I understand you're not, you can't raise taxes, there's nothing you can do, and I understand that you've got your hat in your hand, but look at this overwhelming debt that we have. It goes on for like, a kid born today will hardly be paid off by the time, we're paying two point seven million a year in our debt service. This would take us way over three million.
I understand.
Well, not each year, not each year, no, it wouldn't take, but over the years, it would, it would add almost, almost another million to our debt, yeah.
Now, one thing, Jeff, maybe Jeff can speak to this about the debt service.
Can I ask one question? I neglect the last board meeting, you gave us a paper that I'd like to bring with me tonight, but it was like a summary of what the money we got back for Southmoreland highlighted. And it had, like you said, about the car payment, it was like two hundred and some dollars it would cost Southmoreland in addition to the refund. Did you happen to have-
I did not bring that tonight, Josie. We didn't really want to muddy the water because of just getting the number, being the number.
But that's what we're kinda looking at.
Yes, it, it, right now, again, going back to completely describe that, the money that would typically be refunded, the excess in that number was about two hundred and fifty to two hundred and sixty dollars per month to Southmoreland. So the, the not above what you're already contributing could be fairly small. It could be.
It's the hundred thousand dollars that goes to them in the beginning, if that's what's budgeted in our budget? Are you only budgeting the sixty thousand? Do we know that?
I, like most of the other business managers, budget for the net, the net amount that we pay the VOTEC.
Net, not gross.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, because we-
So the net is the hundred thousand?
We know we're gonna get a refund every year.
Yeah.
No, we pay the VOTEC half a million dollars a year.
Josie, that's not a refund, that's a return of money that is making ours.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just, I don't know what we're budgeting.
But the term refund, but refund implies that, you know, it's something good that, you know, we're getting back that, you know, we didn't pay for in the first place or something like that. That's our money, they're simply returning.
It's gonna cost us an extra sixty thousand dollars.
Right, I, I think, I mean, the rest is sort of, you know, doing theatrics with numbers, I mean, let's face it, we're, it's gonna, if we're gonna remodel, it seems to me, there's a need here. I mean, thirty-seven years is, is a long time, is it, for a public building like this, but, so I, I think you-
Well, and one other point that I would like to speak of, just for a moment, is the impact to your budget will be a year lag. Basically, from the time that the project starts, there's almost a year lag in this process. So that gives you opportunity and time to work it into the budget and maybe start to build a little bit of a, I hate to say a nest egg because that's just almost impossible today, but to build a little bit of reserve so the impact is not as significant. But there is a year lag from the time the project is complete until the first payment is due for this particular project, and that's part of the Energy Savings Act component. The other thing that, that I really want you to take as a takeaway, and Carl mentioned it about the roof, if this does not pass, what will happen is, if we have these failures, and folks, it's, it's getting closer as the clock ticks, if we have these failures, then there is no Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. Chevron is a part of this project, is a partner, and they are guaranteeing as a part of the Act that they will meet certain performances, and if they don't, Chevron gets out their checkbook and writes us up a check for that deficit. If we wait and don't pass this project, there is no backup, it's all distributed among the districts, there is no savings at that point, and it's out and out cost.
Did I understand you correctly, that the structure of the building is in very good shape?
Yes, sir, that is correct, it's, it's the-
Because you don't wanna put money into something that the structure is not-
Correct.
-good enough to hold.
No, the structure-
And how long can you expect the building and everything to last? Thirty-seven years, that's a long time. I feel bad for you because you've stepped into this.
The building, if you remember the, and I can't remember the name of the plant in Youngwood where they make the pre-cast concrete-
Dickerson.
Years ago.
Dickerson.
That's what our building's made out of, it's kinda like a bombshell.
Okay.
It's well-made, it's not, it's not necessarily just brick and mortar, it's pre-cast concrete.
I mean, concrete.
Right.
And it is, it is well-made, that's, that's, that's where we're fortunate, we really are. And, and it's the, it's the other parts that are breaking down.
Actually, yours went into that building after they closed down. Am I right or wrong, like you said, Dickerson, it wasn't a Dickerson building, was it?
It was, yeah, Dickerson, that's right, that's the plant out of Youngwood. Now it's owned by a company out of Australia, it's like Sydney, I believe's the name. But, yeah, that's the pre-cast concrete was built right in Youngwood, trucked right over in seventy-five.
So what budget would this affect, two thousand fourteen, fifteen?
Yes, it should be fourteen, fifteenth's budget, because at this point, it will take them a certain amount of time to get the project started, completed, the mobilization will take a fair amount of time, and that's why we're trying to maximize our time and have the MOU and the resolutions hopefully to this board for consideration in the month of November, after that vote is taken and the consideration is done. And if we have the affirmative that Brad indicated, then Chevron will have the green light to start amassing their subcontractors that work for them. All the subcontractors that Chevron employs have their Act thirty-four, one fourteen, and one fifty-one clearances, so they are able to be in the schools. But the critical thing is, school will be interrupted minimally. The Chevron has already agreed that their subcontractors will work second and third shift, so to have the least amount of impact upon the student body, the staff, and the adult education evening class. So that's a significant component as well, where construction workers and students won't be tripping over each other as the construction guys are trying to do their job and the students are trying to get their education.
Could you address Dr. Fike's question about the debt service, maybe the businessman, with the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, maybe even Tom could address that? It's not really a debt service, it falls under something else?
It's a fund.
What, the ESCO?
The payment, yeah. I don't remember.
I don't know how the ESCO factors in.
It, it rolls it into the operational costs for each student based on the ADM. So it actually isn't a separate debt, debt service line item on your budget, it will be a function of the ADM cost. So, it won't be like a separate payment, it won't be a separate bill, it will be a function of the eleven-hundred series on your budget, object thirteen-hundred, I believe, is the actual object number of your budget, and that's where the, you know, total cost will be based on student attendees, attendance, I'm sorry.
So the ESCO will affect the operating costs of the district and not the capital expenditure budget, like?
That should be correct.
Okay.
I'm not a business manager, but I'm, I'm trying to get it on the upswing.
Phil, I have a question for you, what if we run out of money?
What if?
Can anybody give us the fact?
No, I mean, we can't make this payment, Josie, these people are stuck.
They're gonna be stuck either way, either roof's gonna fall in or you gotta get it repaired.
Would Chevron be the lowest bidder?
The ESCO energy savings process is not a required lowest bidder, but I will tell you, Chevron paid due diligence and according to the HHSVR report that was done by Hunter Heijus and et cetera, at all, from two thousand and nine, Chevron met all of the criterion that the architectural firm had laid out. The other bidder short-cut a lot of areas and did not even provide a bid on the identified areas in which were necessary to be repaired.
They were, they were basically given the same, plus were proposed, the same specs.
You only got two responses?
Only two companies were able to meet the criteria to give a bid on this project because they happen to be an energy savings company, so there is a lot of criteria and their financial backings and all that kinda stuff. But only two bid, and the one, the other one was not even close as far as, like Jeff's saying, completion of the scope and sequence. They left out so many things that what would end up happening if we would have went with, if we would go with that company, or we would have went with that company, or chose that company, sadly, I would probably be coming back to you in a couple of years saying, well, they didn't fix the boilers, now the boilers broke, and I don't have any heat, you're gonna have to keep the kids here in the cafeteria for two weeks while we get contractors in, it's probably triple the cost to repair this.
How expensive was your potential to get the project?
We put it out for bid in April, was out for a month, we had a lot of people call, a lot of people take out the, the list that you have here, it was basically from the architectural firm. A lot of them wanted a bid on the project, but because the project, scope of it, and all the different things that you have to meet to be an energy-saving contractor, a lot of companies couldn't meet those requirements. So the only two that ended up being able to provide us was the proposal, Chevron and Hunter.
Are there any other energy grants available that maybe we could get help with this project? Or the settlement or anything out there that can help in addition to? Yeah, I don't know.
I'm currently not aware of any, Josie, myself.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Is there any grants out there for this or anything you could get?
None that I'm aware of, none that I'm aware of.
Is this based on those green energy credits? Is that what that is, these savings?
No, no, it, it's just a part of the Act seventy-seven process.
It's not that green?
I didn't think there was a corollary, but I didn't want to misspeak.
No, I just didn't know anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Explain, explain to the board who HHDSR is?
HHSVR?
Yes.
It's an architectural firm, Hunter Heijus, and I forget what the other three partners are, and they were initially contracted to provide a service to Central West back in two thousand and nine. They provided to Central West at that time four separate reports from two thousand and nine October through, I believe, November of two thousand and ten. The renovation, and they were having a full-blown renovation, had four options at that point, the prices of that renovation ranged from thirty-six to thirty-six million dollars. And it was a significant project. At that time, the project was stalled because of its cost and Plan Con not being a viable opportunity, and, and that's kind of what has evolved and brought us to where we are today, because now we are three-plus years down the road and we are starting to experience some significant areas which we are going to have failures. I, I don't know how else to tell you that, we are going to start to have failures. And just so you understand, the boiler issue alone, it's a eight-week lead time. If we have a boiler go down, it's from the time of order, it's four weeks to get the boiler, the new boiler on site, and then the installation process is approximately three weeks to four weeks. So it won't be an easy circumstance if we happen to have that catastrophic event. Sir?
You said this begins at two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget, is that when the works gonna start?
No, sir. The Chevron basically is in a position to be able to do the work and wait on their money. Unlike most contractors today, they want paid within thirty days from completion of the work. Chevron, as a part of this agreement, has given us a window of opportunity for the districts to be able to gather their resources to be able to make that payment a year after completion.
So we're not waiting two years and possibly roof leaking and things like that-
No, sir.
-in a two-year span of no-
No. As soon as the resolutions are passed and we get all the boards on board, for lack of a better way of stating it, Chevron will be able to start making plans for, I believe, spring of thirteen, is that correct, Tom and Sean? Spring of fourteen, they will, or thirteen, they will start to mobilize, it'll take them a, a bit of time to get the mobilization done, but as soon as possible, they will start in early spring, so they are on the ground and conducting business, you know, from probably late April, possibly early April, through the balance of the construction itself.
I would also like to state that we checked the references of both companies, and as Mrs. Kaufman stated earlier, the nice thing about this, this particular project is, once passed, the, we checked the references for Chevron, a lot of different schools Chevron has worked for across the state of Pennsylvania. And I can, I mean, Jeff and I can give those to Dr. Scott and Dr. Molnar to show you that their references came back superb. There were no, what they call max, moves, adds, changes, change words, was taken care of. They had no issues with changing the schedule to work in the buildings at night, weekends, whatever they had to do, so that the education of our students was moved forward and kept, so that they weren't, didn't fall behind in their curriculum, because a lot of what we do, they have to pass certain tasks, they need so much time, they're working on industry certifications, so it's important that the kids have those opportunities to be able to do those things in time as needed, and Chevron, from everyone we talked to, I mean, I'm not pulling this out of my, out of a hat, they, they raved about how well and professional they were in all the subcontractors, so that's why we felt comfortable with that selection.
And if there are no other questions, we've ran over our time limit, we greatly apologize, but if, if there are no other questions, we need to let you folks get about the rest of your business. Ma'am, did you have a question?
I wanted to summarize, basically, so if you would have a total system failure, all systems would be failed, you would have to close, correct? So then therefore, we would not be able to provide our students with an alternative with the career in technology that-
Correct.
-give them another path, career, something they could use, as a gentleman previously spoke, that he, now is the second generation he's built. We would never, not be able to provide our kids with that kind of a, an opportunity. Thank you very much.
One question.
Oh, yes, sir.
What happens if this resolution goes through? Everybody votes on to do it, and you have a failure, where do we stand?
Excellent question. Chevron has, in, in our past discussions, indicated that if we would have a boiler go down, that they would start on that immediately and just roll it into the project, but they would not let us be dead in the water. Because they have resources that they can get a temporary boiler on our site and temporarily get that installed to, so we have heat.
But that's a concern.
Mm-hmm.
Once it goes through, if something happens, where are we at?
Well, and the other concern that we really didn't even address, and, and this will be my closing comment, is the issue of mold. If the roof starts to leak and we start to have mold issues, we have now compounded the issue beyond the current scope of concern. So, that, that's the parting comment that I have. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you.
So we'll put this on the agenda and vote it up or down next week, we're gonna move stage the school down the agenda, so you can-
Yeah, next for discussion, the Transportation Committee, which was a committee the whole met on, on Thursday, September twenty-seventh.
You're not going to stay in school?
December, we're putting that probably out.
To where am I?
Moving it down the agenda. This will be the last thing of the public. Mr. Potonic had numerous changes and additions that he felt were necessary to protect the district's interests. After a great deal of discussion, it was decided that the specifications in the present contract should be used as a request for proposal for student transportation. At the same meeting, a letter from Art Showman, proprietor of Groom's Transit, doing business as Quest Transit, was presented to the committee. Mr. Showman has proposed that the district enter into early-bird negotiations with Groom to negotiate a successor agreement with a reduction in rates. The committee is recommending that the board authorize- The committee is recommending that the board authorize administration to pursue such talks in order to bring a proposal to the full board at the November meeting. If the proposal is satisfactory to the board, it could then be approved. If it is not satisfactory, the request for proposal will be ready to be sent out at that time. A copy of Mr. Showman's letter is included. This is next for discussion.
Any specifics?
I don't think we have specifics.
Yeah.
As far as numbers go yet. I, I think what Dr. Scott was referring to is that Grooms is going to give us specifics to discuss, and then if that is unsatisfactory, we can proceed with the full-blown RFP.
We're not going anywhere else. We're not looking at anybody else.
That's up, that's up to the board to decide. Like I said, if the, if the proposal from Mr. Grooms Transit isn't satisfactory, then we can move forward, forward with the RFP.
Not that we know it's satisfactory, not that we have nothing to prepare.
We have it for next week.
That's a good question.
Well, here's a, here's a question. Could our Transportation Director, you, could we get numbers from neighboring districts, Mount Pleasant Dairy, kind of comparable size, and per diem, so that we would have, so that when, I, I'm, I'm for this, because I think Grooms has been a satisfactory provider here for us, but to see whatever they'd be proposing, that it's comparable to, or how it, how it looks.
How compares to other neighboring districts.
Exactly, to other, other neighboring districts. And that would, at least for me, that would be some, I mean, there might be other guidelines, but it would be some helpful.
I think it's good, because two people from two neighboring districts told me that we have the highest transportation costs they've ever seen, so it would be helpful to see what other people have.
Last Thursday, the Transportation Director did have, I don't know if it's him or Dr. Molnar, did have, from a district close to us, numbers, and I think they were actually a little lower. I mean, we were a little lower than them, is that correct? Did you pull it over here last?
Who is this?
I don't know.
Did he know?
Do you have those specifics?
Well, I think you could quite, quite easily, from the business manager, get several, several more. I mean, I'm, I'm for what you're saying, but I'm just thinking that would.
If this letter has, would be interested to negotiate, is that to be the early bird to negotiate this year? What the remainder of, be willing to renegotiate the remainder of the current contract and enter, enter in five years? So that's the information that we'll report, whether we know, whether we want to go on and look for somebody else.
Is that a piece of candy?
Right.
Piece of candy he's throwing out?
Right, we don't know what that information is.
Yeah.
There's only one thing that bothers me about this. A lot of your industries, like your busing and everything else, will come in and sweep you off your feet to get the contract, but what comes with it?
That's right.
The service that this man's given us, with bus transportation and a whole new yard, I, I, I'm a little nervous, because somebody wants this so bad, they'll come in here and sweep you off your feet, take it off of him, and then down the road, you're gonna find out it doesn't as good a service as what you thought you had.
The problem I'm having is, all of a sudden, in minutes, I have to make a decision about a five-year, multimillion-dollar contract, a, a million-dollar vote tech. All of a sudden, we have to do this stuff in two minutes. Other stuff takes years to get done, and these huge things, we're being asked to do in one month, or a couple of weeks?
We're not voting on the burden, like two times.
No, but he just, he, he's saying, he wants it now, November. He says November, Mike, okay, is what I'm saying. But all of a sudden, this is October, next, next month is November, even when we have the meetings. All of a sudden, this stuff's being thrown at us, and we're supposed to just, you know, we're not spending our money, we're spending our taxpayers' money. And we have to be diligent, we have to make sure we're doing the right thing. And, and to tell me you have to vote on something that quickly, that's that big, I mean, I, and for five years, and we were worried about five years. Did they change it back to three, Mr. Potonic? Did they change it to three?
My, I'm not sure I understand your question.
The first thing I saw was they wanted a five-year contract, and we questioned the length of it.
I, I did question the length.
And what happened?
Well, the committee's discussion, I think, if I remember correctly, was that we, you know, the counterproposal would probably be to, if you're keeping the current year, but you're reducing the cost, that you would have that, and the new part would be not five years, but four years. So depending on how you look at it, the new part would be four years, not five years, but the total length of it would be, I still guess you could call it a five year, but you've already got that one year started.
But you'd be under the old contract with the one year.
Well, it's the old contract, but if he's going to offer a reduction in price, you're actually kind of amending the old contract to lower the cost. If you went out with new requests for proposals, my understanding from our discussion was consensus of the committee to agree to make it not a five-year contract, but a four-year contract. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, who was at that committee meeting?
I wasn't.
We were all invited, but I couldn't make it.
Yeah, so only two of you were there?
No, Amy and Sammy were just here.
I went, because I was there at another meeting, and I just stayed.
Yeah.
Because I think that's, isn't that a debate we had one other time, where nobody was invited or something?
This was the committee as a whole.
Yeah, everybody was invited.
It just was a bad day, and I know I specifically asked it to be changed so I could attend, but it wasn't. And that's all right, you don't have to do that. But again, my pressure to make these decisions, huge decisions, in such a short period of time.
When is that contract up? Like, how?
Oh, it's a year, yeah, it's a year.
The contract ends at the end of this school year.
End of this school year.
Right.
But he wants something by November thirtieth.
I think the early bird provision is, rather than making a decision in November, the early bird part of it is, as the present contractor, he wants to be able to make a proposal first. And he, he's asking permission in November to make that proposal.
Right.
And, and in other words, early bird meaning, hey, can you take a look at my proposal and see if you want to re-sign with me before you send it out?
All I'm reading him is, it says a new contract would need to be entered to on or before November thirtieth. That's.
Well, it takes two to tangle, so it depends on how we, how we look at it. But just, just this, I would, I would bring to it, Mr. Showman has worked with this company for a long time. Mr. Porter has been our point person on this. There is a very, and, and Mr. Porter has high credibility with many of us here. And his relationship, and, and our current director would need to speak for himself, and you as business manager, but it has been a very satisfactory relationship and an attempt to serve us very well here. So if the numbers are close to comparable to what other districts, we, we shouldn't be paying more, but on the other hand, let's not think that we're doing something here that, out of the blue. We're running on a pretty good, long history here, in regards to the company that we're dealing with. And, and so I would take that in, in strong consideration in November when we look at this, that's, that's.
Levi, nobody's questioning their service. It has been good, that's not an issue.
I think we did take everything you said, Levi, into consideration when we were discussing around the table.
Right.
I mean, you know, I have found everything you say to be true, and that's what I said, you know, we took that highly into consideration when we were talking about it.
I'm, I'm, I'm probably speaking out of turn, because I wasn't here last week, and, so I apologize.
That sums it up pretty good.
But that's, that's what I'm, I'm really.
Don't you hear the re-spoken?
Yes. It sums it up perfectly.
Well, I'm, I, I, I really appreciate that you've given time and attention to it on behalf of, of all of us here.
What did you guys agree to? Can you tell me?
We agreed to bring this to the board to see what you wanted to do. The, the bottom line is, we need to know if the board would be willing to entertain an offer from Mr. Showman. If not, then we'll just move right to the RFP process right now.
What's that initial? What's that mean, RFP?
Request for proposal.
Request for proposal.
Okay.
So, I mean, really, you have the best of both worlds. Mr. Showman can make us a proposal, and if the board doesn't like it, we can send it out for, you know, request.
And I'm, I'm really in favor of that. It just bothered me that he's saying he wants something signed by November thirtieth.
Well, you know.
That's all, that's the only question I have.
I'm not sure that November thirtieth date is etched in stone.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, it's the fifth of October, and I think there's enough time to move forward.
Charlie, do you have anything you want to add to this?
What Bill was, you know, Mr. Salem's saying is what I kind of got out of this. We're, we're kind of in the driver's seat with this contract. If we get Grooms, what he's gonna do, and I think what he's asking for is an opportunity, which I think we probably should give him since all the years he's serviced your district. And I will say, he's very good at what they do, they are very, very good service, even from what I've seen just coming into the district. He's, anytime I've asked for anything throughout the year, he's, he's given me the request, he's never turned down anything for the students. But what would happen, I would think, is, we would have that proposal, we'll look at it, whether we counter-proposal anything back, but at that point, if we don't like it or don't agree, we have the proposal ready, that you can send it out, that we're not waiting, so that we can get this contract moving and get it probably approved before we go into our budgets and we know where we stand.
Charlie, I heard there weren't very many companies.
Excuse me?
That there aren't very many bidders.
There's, there's not, there's some bigger companies. One thing that I've, would caution, you know, sometimes you get, like Mr. Bysel said and a few others, you'll get a, a company that's so, they want that contract so much that they'll undermine, or they'll underbid with some of their service providers. You'll get lower drivers that really aren't as qualified or as concerned about the students and things like that to lower the cost. So I mean, there's, you gotta watch both ways of what we're getting into. He's, he's serviced the school district for quite a while, but there are some things on there that, you know, we looked at and we think needs to be changed. And obviously, in, in the economy now, you know, there's give and take here. So I think it's a, we should probably give him an opportunity, or I would ask you, probably give him that opportunity, look at the proposal, see what he has, make a decision on it, and then if we don't like it, we move on. But as far as his, that particular company, even the ones I've witnessed some other places, they're very good at what they do.
My concern is the lack of competition. There's no competition.
Well, at, once they get the contract, there's not, but, I mean, there, you'll probably, there's several bus companies out there, I know there's a few that will want it.
Really?
Or that will, you know, they'll bid on it. It's whether they'll give us the same service, and, you know, you gotta look like, we said, whether you're paying, you know, some of the things we get, we got safe buses, you know, many, many times, the state police pull over or check these buses, there's nothing wrong with it, the quality of them, the care, you know, his mechanics, they're updated, they're safe for the kids. Most of the drivers, if you'll listen on during, throughout the day on the radio, I mean, they know the kids usually by name, they know what parent's supposed to be there. You don't hear about where a driver let a kid off at a wrong stop and then drove off or, or took them to somewhere. I mean, they're pretty, pretty knowledgeable, but, and that's some of the things that you're getting with a, a local company. But again, I just think we should take a look at what he has to offer, make a smart decision on it. If we don't like it, you always got the proposal ready and we can move on.
So we'll put this on the agenda for next week, so we can vote that up or down also.
Thank you.
Policy seven oh seven. Next one.
The Policy seven oh seven committee has made revisions to the posted policy based on Mr. Potonic's recommendations. You'll be asked to adopt this policy at the October eleventh meeting. I'll turn it over for discussion.
I'd like to comment my name. I had a, I mean, this has gone back and forth, obviously, the committee worked on this a long time. Dr. Moore and I have gone back and forth with each other in the committee, and then last week, we had a meeting of that committee, and there was a lot of discussion, the changes made. Some of the changes really aren't legal changes, they're just, you know, what does the committee want, what does the board want, and try to get clarification. I wanted to keep this thing moving, so I got a copy of the redrafted agreement today, and I still had some questions, so I generated this memo. And it may not be necessarily graphical errors, it may be my pronunciation errors or hearing errors on some of these things, so I, I just don't wanna.
You're right, you're right.
My pronunciation, okay.
I know, probably I didn't.
But it could be some beach, but in any event, one of the key things were to have a definition of a district-related group. So in the memo that I've handed out here, is my best memory of what it should be and what we either talked about or almost exactly talked about. And it's just a little bit of grammar and changing of inner to inter and activities to organizations of which. And I think, did I state that correctly from the committee members, the way I have it here now on the memo?
Mr. Mash and Mr. Kofchek, I mean, if you feel free to.
And I don't know if there's enough to get down to Mr. Mash and to, is there another copy over there, or did I run out?
You guys have a copy here?
Here's another copy.
Pass them around.
Well, you have, there's a copy for these illustrators.
Here's the.
I'm referring to what Mr. Bysel's trying to hand down. This is hot off the presses at about five fifty-five this afternoon. So I had that. And then my other area of still not understanding what it is, the committee and the board as a whole wants, is that the classifications of the groups has been clarified. And what happens is, we end up with kind of a repetition of the phrase "local businesses." And it shows up on your attachment, this red thing, and under Group B, Item Four, Community Associations, including and unlimited to, under H, it lists "local businesses." And then if you turn the page, there is a Group C, and under it is Private Enterprises, but only for charitable or not-for-profit activities. And I still don't understand what distinction the board or committee was trying to make, or if maybe this is just a, you know, something that got misplaced, because it's in here twice, and I can't tell a distinction between local businesses and then under C, Private Enterprises. And my reason for saying that is, in the beginning part of the seven oh seven, this form, we say, and we have said in the past, or I mean, the board has said in the past, the following purposes are prohibited, it's about the fourth or fifth line down, partisan political activities and for-profit businesses and for-profit fundraising activities. So the distinction can't be fundraising activities for retention by the business itself, for its own profit activity, you know, having its own special sale in the cafeteria or something, for its own profit, based on what you already have up front. So that's not the basis of the distinction. And the only other thing I could think of is, you know, is it the composition of the business itself? On another page, it's already been established that, page three of nine, school facilities will be available for public use, only to those sponsoring groups, of which eighty percent of the membership are residents of the area comprising the South Orleans School District, or of which South Orleans School District is a member. So it sounds to me like, if you're gonna have a local business, it would be a locally-owned business, okay, who's within our boundaries and comprised of a local taxpayer. And if then that person, if they wanted to do something of a charitable nature, or of a cultural nature, or of an informational nature, they would have the right to come in and rent your building. And my question then is, okay, are they Group B or are they Group C? Want B, okay. But then my question is, under C one, that seems to me to be unnecessary, it's sort of creating confusion. It implies that there's another category that doesn't exist. But if, if you want some other category, tell me what it is. But if you want some other category, tell me what it is, so we can get it in.
Well, to me, C1 means somebody private business wants to come and run something for nonprofit, raise money spaghetti dinner or something like that. Over here, it says "for profit," so that's the distinction there.
Did you, did you, I know.
No, it says "private enterprises, but only for charitable or not-for-profit activities."
David, I dared to reach the, to skook out at the last meeting. I think it should be a 503C, 503C, 503 charity. It has to be a registered charity.
Who?
Anybody who wants to use this. I made the example, "Okay, I'm going to raise money for the Salvation Army, I give them ten bucks and keep the rest."
I haven't pushed that far, and I'm reluctant to do so, because if you're going to make every group that wants to use your facilities jump through the hoops to acquire that status.
No, 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 no.
I think it's going to really.
You're not doing that. No, you're not doing that.
Diminish your.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, anybody can call a charity, can call something a charity and walk in here and do whatever they want with no rules. And I just think that there's nothing wrong with making sure it's a designated charity. But that doesn't interfere with any school groups or anything. They don't have to do anything.
Are you talking about only businesses, or are you talking about every classification here?
Charities, charities. 503Cs, 503.
No, I mean, but where are you applying that? Are you making Group A do that, are you making Group B do that, or just Group C?
Well, I have a real problem with the classifications, but I'm not going to bother you with it. I'm just simply not going to bother you with it. I just.
You're not bothering me.
Well.
We would eliminate letter H when the group does that.
It would, but I'm not telling you you have to do that. You could get, you could get letter C1.
Listen, if it takes your question, Mayor, it's Yale.
Yes.
Which, or they.
Say what?
Yeah, yes.
This thing's got me so screwed up right now, I don't know where.
If you're on the committee side, I'm asking.
I understand.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
My, I mean, my logic was that if you're, if you've got a business, that they're not doing it for, for personal profit, then they're almost like all these other things that you have in, in Group B. They're rather similar in fact.
So, we need.
But you can do it either way.
Number four, letter H.
Sounds good.
We're going to do like C1.
Go there.
Okay.
That way we don't have to replace it.
The next question. My next question goes to, I want to straighten this up. If you go to page three, the schedule of rental and supplemental fees and charges on the attachment. And I may be wrong about this. Under Group... My, my memory was that for Group, and I can't remember now if it's A or B. I have a hand written out here. I thought you were going to make an exception for if they donated all the proceeds to charity. Use of facilities shall be at no rental cost to the group except for when the activity occurs on a non-South Orleans School District workday and/or admission fee is charged. And I'm not sure if, if that applied, you had a, an admission fee charged and it was a weekend, but all the proceeds were going for charity, were you still going to charge the rental fee for, I think it's Group A?
So, if the band wants to have a spaghetti dinner, the profit goes to charity and not the band?
Josie, what happened in the past, they had these charitable events where they raised X amount of dollars.
Right.
And when I looked at the fee, it almost cost us that much to have it here.
Right.
We may as well just write a check to the charity.
That's your policy debate. You guys decide that.
I don't care, David. I really don't care. I do have another question, though, about something else.
But I'd like clarification on that. Now, this is what I have in my notes. I don't know if Yale or somebody has something. I know my print's not great. Do you remember, just present?
It could be right, what's gone like that.
Dan, it's Charlie, you guys.
I'm replying that.
Correct. But as we've all said, we've looked at this many times, it starts to flow together quick and good.
Do you want the exception that I've just stated, or not want the exception is the question? It's for Group A.
Repeat it one more time.
This is coming from the committee, so I'm just asking Yale and Wood, and we all presented and Wood has voted up and down.
I just didn't want to give you the question.
Well, no.
Went off, yeah.
You're going to meet again, Mike? You're going to just go back to your committee and meet again?
This is. You're going to add that to that.
We're putting it on the agenda tonight after you.
Oh, I have a serious question I want to ask you.
Well, that's fine. You can ask it.
Well, they're not done with this yet.
That's what I said, we're done with.
What's that say, Gil?
Says, "Use of a facility shall be at no rental cost to the group except when the activity occurs on a non-South Orleans School District workday and/or admission is charged." An admission charges, sorry. And/or admission fee is charged. And then, "Except when, all proceeds of the event go solely for charity." So, it would go, all the proceeds of the event goes solely for charity. Then the following rental fee shall apply.
So, that means that that group, if you allow the exception to the exception, then they're going to, they're not paying anything.
Right. It's right back where we started. We should just write a check.
Schedule will run.
Just write a check.
They're not paying rent. So, they're not paying supplemental charge.
They're not paying anything.
You're allowing the use of the facility.
They did it before.
This is Group A. Do you want to go that far?
As it is now, I like the band, because that's what I'm familiar with. On a Sunday, they do spaghetti dinners. As of right now, they do it on a Sunday, the custodians come, they have to pay the custodian fees.
Correct, right.
But no 707, because.
Well, whatever it's.
Whatever it is. But if you say your way, the monies would just go back to them.
They're not a, they're not a charity.
No, no, the idea, I think, I think the idea was if the band or the cheerleaders or football team wanted to have a spaghetti dinner and donate the proceeds to.
To Make-A-Wish.
American Cancer Society, Make-A-Wish. Big brothers, big sisters, you know.
And then we pay the freight.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, that makes sense if it's more for Make-A-Wish or something like that.
Then why are we not afraid to designate the charity, the designation for a registered charity? Why are, why are we afraid to do that?
Because then.
It wouldn't affect anybody.
Family or his parents or whoever would have to go and qualify as a.
No, 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 they fall under another category.
Make-A-Wish.
They fall under another category.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Yeah.
Oh.
What is it, 503C?
Yeah.
Okay. Because anybody can come in and say this is a charity. Is there anything wrong with saying, "We want legitimate charities here, but we're going to pay the freight"? We should at least have some say-so.
You, I suppose the distinction would be if you had, and sometimes you see this in communities, you have these situations where some families encountered some disaster.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, loss of home by fire, child with horrendous medical bills, et cetera.
David, doesn't it say in here we have the right?
They wouldn't qualify.
Doesn't it say in here we have the right to do that? I thought it said in here that the board has the right.
To do what?
To make decisions regarding these requests.
The way I read that is, those decisions have to be based on what you have, not making up an exception.
Okay.
It would be if there's some confusion, and the only way to get it straightened out is to make the board decide.
Okay, well, right now.
But it's not meant to go rewriting the policy just for one group.
Okay.
I would have little concerns.
I, I'm with you.
What would be wrong with, after your custodian fees are taken out, what you want to donate to and leave it go then? What the proceeds are, it goes to whatever charity you want to with the custodian fees out.
They deduct, they deduct the cost.
Cost out of them and then the rest of it goes to.
Yeah, deduct the cost.
Which could I be?
And then give them the rest, yeah.
Goes to whatever. And then we're not paying the freight.
That makes sense.
So, you'd want, you'd want the Group A to leave supplemental charges.
Out of whatever they make.
Out of whatever they make.
Yeah. And it's not that much, I mean.
I mean, merely, probably seventy-five dollars.
So, except when all proceeds of the event goes solely to charity.
At minus.
Net of supplemental charges.
Net of supplemental charges.
Supplemental charges.
So, cross that round.
It's just an insert after the word charity.
You win board member of the meeting.
Net of supplemental.
What? Don't put me on a high page.
That was good.
Charges.
Yeah, that was good.
So, we will read, David, "Except when all proceeds of the event go solely for charity, net of supplemental charges." Which still must be paid. Then the following rental fee shall apply? Mm-hmm, that would still spend it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, you've sort of answered my question. C, or number four, I think. I, well, I guess number four is.
Out.
Under Group C, number two. What else is there?
Group C, other groups?
Right.
Group's not listed.
Two located, yeah. Group's not listed on this page, that's it. I tried to come up with one, I couldn't. Can anybody? It's just.
No, it's just a catch-all, like Mike said.
That's why I don't like it. If you can't identify one now, it makes me nervous.
That should not be in there.
Or is it one down? Any on here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's got to be B.
There are.
Well, it's up to you to decide.
Where are you at, David?
I'm on.
Group C.
This red, yeah, C, where it says "any other group," which, "any other group that's not listed."
You all have finally been in there.
See that long line there, "any other group"? And that leaves the door wide open.
It's a catch-all.
Which do you find?
Page two.
Yeah, he has it.
Which, are you finding that in there?
Say what, sir?
Yale, so can we leave it in there? Do you think we can leave it in there? Or you want to take it out?
It's a catch-all. Group's not listed on this page.
Now, before you decide that, here's my other point. We're going to read the next one. The way the attachment seems to read is that the supplemental charges for security, maintenance and custodial only apply to Group C.
Correct.
Is that, correct?
Correct. That's right.
And the only thing that exists in Group C now are private enterprises for charitable purposes and number two, the catchalls. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. But Group A, if they're doing, they're going to pay supplemental charges when they have, what, admissions on the four weekends? Is that, because that wasn't really clearly, clearly stated.
The way that was, if they sold tickets to make a profit and to have charged admission, then they had to pay. Am I right or wrong?
Right.
Okay, well, that wasn't stated, so I think we should add that.
As long as they charge admission.
That really wasn't stated.
Which group are you talking about?
Back to A.
Facility usage by drifted charge of admission and the rental fee, supplementally will be assessed.
That's rental fee, that's not supplemental.
I hate the way to clear this up. You're going to charge admission, sell fifty-fifties, whatever it may be, then you have to pay the supplemental fees. As long as you're making a profit off anything off our district, I think you should pay.
I, well, I mean, I'm not arguing with you.
No, but I, that's one way of getting this thing off going, because as long as they're making admission, having an admission fee and everything else, why should we, they should pay the supplemental fee? That way, we're not stuck with all the bills. I mean.
But we've already agreed that if it's all going to charity, that, oh, but they are going to pay the supplemental.
They're going to pay supplemental fees after the profit.
So, add supplemental fees will be charged for non-workdays.
So, that's.
And/or when admission is charged.
Yeah. Anything on the weekend, when you have to bring people in, pay them to do the job.
But I thought we were just doing the supplemental fee, not the rental fee. Is that correct?
Don't they get free, don't they be still doing the seventy-three things?
That was taken out.
That's taken out.
So, we're just doing supplemental fee.
No, I'm sorry, it does say rental fee.
That's why I'm asking, I think rental fee should be out of there.
Why, Mike? Why? Why?
Facility, all right, no rental.
Committee decided that.
Oh, the committee decided that. I thought this was open for discuss. You know, that's your answer to me every single time I go to say something. You can vote the way you want. Mike and I'm tired of it.
I'm going to give you a chance to ask some questions. Let's get through what you did as you said earlier.
I'm trying to deal with this issue.
Well, right now, it does say, then the, it does say, then the following, it shouldn't be "then," it should be "the," not "then."
Where are we at?
At the top, there is.
The memo that I gave.
Oh, okay.
I had "then," but it should be "the."
Yeah, well, here, wasn't it just supplemental fee?
Why should they not pay rental fees, is my question?
They would pay rental fees, this is stated on weekends and.
Non-workdays.
Non-workdays, when you're incurring, more likely to incur extra costs. And they're also going to pay supplemental charges. Supplemental charges will be paid for non-South Orleans workdays. Sorry, repeating it again. And/or admission, when admission fee is charged. Now, is that where we are?
How far with, Mr. President here, my question is this, how long are we going to spend on this?
That's all.
These are not legal questions, these are policy questions. We have very good administration here, and they should be handled by the superintendent and by the building principals and not by our attorney here in doing this kind of work here.
The question I have is legal, Levi.
Well, fine, we're at the end of it, but I, we could spend, we could go on these little, trying to say whether it's this word or that word until 10 o'clock here tonight. And it would be a bad use of our board time.
On page three, number nine.
On the red one?
No, the one with no ink on it. Are we saying that if a non-professional employee is called in, they don't get this money?
Same as what?
Page three, number nine. It says, "Only professional employees are called in. We call in non-professional employees too." But if we have, for example, an administrator who's already being paid a full salary, are we going to pay them again to come in?
I can't find where you want.
Page three, number nine.
The one that has no corrections on it.
No corrections.
Follow black one. Page three, number nine.
The one with no red ink, Kim. No red ink on it. No red ink, no red ink.
Is this one here?
Oh, awesome.
Page three, number nine.
Are administrators classified employees or are, are administrators classified employees, professional employees or teachers, right?
No.
And administrators?
Ministers, principals and certificate, professionals.
All right.
So, if they come in, we pay them again, right?
Mr. Swann, administrator.
Charlie would not count.
Mr. Kropchak would count.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so a professional person is a teacher?
And a principal.
And a principal.
Assistant principal.
He's not an administrator, Mr. Kropchak's not an administrator.
Well, he's both.
But if this passes.
Wait, this says, "Whose regular duties do not include facility usage supervision."
Right.
I think that's part of his duties. That's the principal's duty.
That's what I'm trying to get at, yeah.
Isn't there a distinction on this about a principal's duties?
Isn't there a distinction on this about a principal's duties? For example, if they're supervising a, their own event, a basketball game, that doesn't apply, but if they're supervising a seven-oh-seven for someone who is coming in, uh, what, what would an example be?
Maybe a midget football game on a Sunday.
Midget football game on a Sunday.
There's a problem, because.
But why, why wouldn't they get a teacher, why would they, why would Mr. Krawcheck want to come on a Sunday when he's already here six days a week? I mean, wouldn't you try, would you try to find someone else other than yourself? Or are we, I mean, if you can't, I bet.
Well, I, I, it is not part of his responsibilities to supervise midget football. It, it is part of his responsibilities to supervise Southmoreland High School football.
Josie, everybody can bill. Everybody can put in a bill.
Well, I don't really, wait, I mean, that's saying, if a teacher has to come in, then we pay the teacher.
If that's what it means.
Or other professional employees.
But.
But it says whose regular duties do not include facility usage supervision, it has included facility usage supervision. A teacher's, uh, duties would not include facilities, usage supervision.
Then they cannot bill.
Principals cannot bill for coming in on weekends.
On seven-oh-seven.
That's the way I read it. Is that what it says, Dave?
I'm not sure. I, I've had this discussion with Dr. Molnar, I'm not sure what you kind of, this whole thing is in that.
Okay.
Okay. But once this passes, that language can't be changed unless we repost it, am I correct?
Correct. Can't be changed unless we post it.
Can't change it once it's passed, it's passed, it's, it's law.
Unless we vote on it, unless we bring it up again, wait the ninety day, the thirty day.
That's what I said, Josie, you have to go through the thing again.
I mean, can you clarify that for us, or?
No, no, she's saying after we post it, if somebody has, no, I'm sorry, after it's approved, passed. Whatever version.
Whatever version.
You want to change it again.
It stands, you have to re-post the whole thing.
Have another thirty day. No. At least I don't think.
No, that's what I meant. Language in there is binding.
Well, if, can you clarify just that number nine for us for next week?
I don't know if that's my job or superintendent's or yours as a whole, I, I don't know what you want.
Josie, shouldn't non-professional be there too? Shouldn't non-professional be there, if they're called in?
Who's a non-professional?
Oh, any, any cafeteria people or?
They're not going to supervise, right?
Well.
They'll get paid. Custodians, they get called in, you're, they'll get paid.
How about a secretary, is that what I'm getting at?
Well, secretary get paid if they call her in an extra.
It's not in, that's what I'm getting at, but the word non-professional's not in there.
The only trouble is if they call secretary and somebody calls off, she has to get paid.
I understand that, but I'm trying to protect them, so that they have the right to come in, for example, it's, they, they need them to come in themselves, to consider something like that. It doesn't say whether they have any rights. I don't care. Where's that, uh? Yeah, okay, it says it there, mm-hmm, and that has to do with their request to come in, right? And I'm just saying, this first one has to do with getting paid. The first, first paragraph is where they get paid, the second one is, they have, they have the right to voluntarily participate, that's a condition of employment.
Can't we talk?
Can't you add or not, a non-professional?
That's what I'm asking, Vicki, that was all I'm asking, I just want to protect them. I just want to protect them.
Can't we have about it during the week and then come back next week and rather work, we can even add a non-professional, we had to talk about it more next week?
When next week?
Well, I want to go to that one.
At the meeting.
Have more info, more clarity.
At the meeting.
This is being submitted from the committee up for vote, so if you have any input, call Gale, look for myself, and we'll get together.
The input's right here.
Yeah, the input's right here, this is the input.
So why can't you just add a non-professional?
Can we add him on next Thursday, once we get more clarity?
I'll pick it for a minute, so, you have up until next week for us.
I think the idea of adding a non, a non-professional employee could, could easily be incorporated, but just take that as a suggestion for what it's worth.
I would ask you get it to us by Monday, so we can let Vicki know, so you do all your practices with that right in the meeting.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
The curtains on the high school stage are in extreme disrepair, uh, the building was renovated, uh, back in ninety-nine, the, the old stage was extended, the, the main curtain was replaced, however, that black inside curtain, uh, was not replaced at that time. Initially, when we looked at a proposal to have that replaced, the bid came in at over eighty thousand dollars, thankfully, Mr. Mizwak, uh, kind of understood a little bit about the issue, and, and ultimately, all we need is the curtain, we don't need the rigging, we don't need the hardware, all of that stuff is in fine working order, the cables are up to code, uh, everything's been inspected, and, uh, this is where I get to do a demonstration, I'm happy to do it. Jack said, make sure you show them, here, here's, here's a section of the old curtain, uh, it has been repaired with safety pins, and you want me to make sure that I, I'm not a, hey, I'm not, I'm not pulling hard, okay?
I like the dust.
This is not a phone book.
Yeah.
And so, I, I'll pass this around.
No, don't.
But here is, here is a sample from the company of what the new one would be, uh, as you can see, the estimated, it's going to come in at about ten thousand dollars instead of eighty-one thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Mizwak, would you step up and just add anything that you have about this issue, please?
Yes, I met with the representative from Pittsburgh Stage, we went over the safety items. When that was put in, it met all the codes, if you were going to build a new high school now with a new stage, it would do some of the things different. Right now, it meets all the safety regulations, and we do pass the safety regulations when we do, you know, in the future, we may look at changing everything, but for now, just the curtains would need to be changed. We run over each item on the safety inspection with the rep from Pittsburgh Stage.
This is satisfactory, the nine, ten thousand dollar, this is what we need, this is what we pass out.
That's, this, this is from the same company that, uh, does all of their stage inspections, in fact, I think they inspect most of the stages in western Pennsylvania. I know, I've dealt with them before, I, I'm pretty sure they did in Orwin and a lot of the other schools.
Any more questions?
But again, I did go over every item on the, uh, safety inspection that they, uh, spoke about changing.
And it's something that would be in, like, installed in the availability?
I, I can check on the delivery time.
Okay.
So we'll put that on the agenda for next week? Uh, just, just, just one more, Eric?
Uh, just want to mention a, a thank you from Mrs. Tavarmina, our librarian, uh, so thank you to the board for, uh, the generous contribution to the Southmoreland High School library, total of three books, uh, were placed in the memory of Mary Halfhill, mother of Superintendent, uh, Dr. John Halfhill, uh, she says, your kindness is very much appreciated. Uh, John's mother must have been, uh, interested in, in politics with three books, uh, one was political parties and interest groups and elections, another one was the Britannica Guide to Political and Social Movements That Changed the Modern World. I think Mr. Krawcheck has that one currently checked out, and, uh, and the last one, Political Systems Structures and Functions.
That's my kind of reading.
God, that's some, that's some, uh.
That is, he's serious.
No.
So anyway, thank you to the board for, uh, that generous thoughtful donation.
Well, why, why don't you do the, um, state of the schools?
Because that involves reading screen and stuff, and that way, people could be leaving your, your question and stuff while the screen's on.
Okay, uh, Mike, I heard rumors that you appointed a committee, and there's been discussions going on with some people we were not informed about, is that true?
Don't, you don't tell me what committee that is.
An ad hoc committee for Act Ninety-three? You don't announce that to the board, that it's been formed and put in the minutes of who's on it? And that it's even happening, I mean, I, I don't know if anybody else knew, but I just heard a rumor. That's how we're going to run it, Mike? Is that how we're going to run it, Mike? You're not going to inform the board?
Well, we were going to do it in the second session.
This has been going on.
And as it was said.
Since we met the last time.
Negotiations as ever stated, to have the committee do their jobs keeps integrity of the negotiations going on, you remember that, Levi, when you went out?
Okay, when Sam was president, he announced the board, he said, he announced it, we're going to have negotiations and this is the committee, that's all, Mike, it was an ad hoc committee, it was formed, I, I checked under Robert Rules of Orders, and if nothing more, it's a courtesy to at least tell a board that you're going to do something like this. I don't even want to be a part of it, I want nothing to do with it, you don't want me there and I don't want to be there, but could you not even tell us that this was going on? Is that asking too much?
I believe this is the first time since we met, since we had met as a board, and the opportunity is going to be given in second session.
Before it starts, Josie, you announced the ad hoc committee's being formed, all right, what, is that wrong, Josie? Is that wrong, that he would announce to the board that the committee's being formed and that this is going to happen? That's all he had to say.
But the board hasn't met prior to when the first meeting was.
This is before that, this is before that, that committee was appointed a long time ago.
So, and what, what is the name of the committee?
Yeah, I don't know.
Or what, what is the function, or just say a little, what?
We're negotiating with Act Ninety-three, with the meeting discussed, because the previous committee from last year, whoever was on that one, never got anything accomplished to, they went a year without a contract, so now, I received the letter from their representative requesting the meeting, and that's, and I got the committee together, we started meeting.
I beg to differ with you, Mike, you were on the board, I was on the board, the last time this happened, nine people walked in a room, met with their spokespeople, they left and went and discussed it, they came back, and all nine of us discussed it and then went out and voted, that's how it was done, you were there, I was there. That was how it was done.
We met.
This is the last time it was done, the last time it was done.
Last year.
The last time it was done, that's how it was.
We met in Dr. Halfhill's office, Act Ninety-three, it was just me, you, Mr. Lee was there apart, and that was Act Ninety-three too, when it was just a subcommittee.
The whole, the whole board.
No, we were in administration when we met.
Josie, we were in that room downstairs?
No, we were upstairs in Dr. Molnar's office, with Mr. Lee, that was when we first got on the board, the subcommittee.
Well, anyhow, I think it would be a courtesy, if nothing else, to inform the board that this is.
It wasn't done on purpose.
Oh, yes, it was, Josie.
Oh, my goodness.
Josie, it was, Josie, you know it was. The other thing that, uh, I wanted to talk about is, about two weeks ago, I called Dr. Molnar and I, I asked him to give me and the whole board the P V O S information. Do you have it?
Do I have P V O S information to give to you?
Yeah. Do you know what the status of that is?
Status of what?
The P V O S, are we going to get that information?
Well, I'm, I'm sure if you ask for it, Dr. Molnar will provide it.
It was a couple of weeks ago, I'm going to repeat my request. So that we can take a look, look at that and see what's going on. I had a question, are you, um, is anybody being trained for the teacher evaluation process that passed at House Bill nineteen eighty? It's supposed to start in thirteen fourteen?
I actually, um, is, well, uh, signed up for webinars and, and I'm receiving some information through the IU, actually, I just found out on Friday, at a meeting of the, the Westmoreland IU Curriculum Council, that it won't start for us.
That's fourteen fifteen, and non-teaching professionals in fourteen fifteen.
It won't, uh, what happens is, uh, they just got clarification, if you're under an existing contract, that existing contract will supersede the startup of this, so the new teacher evaluation system will go into effect with the next contract, the districts that are presently in negotiations must adopt, uh, the new teacher evaluation system.
So that would be two thousand seventeen, we start to do evaluations?
Whatever the term of the current contract is, evaluations under the new state-approved system.
Hmm. So it'll be the year two thousand sixteen seventeen, before we evaluate, we use that system.
Based on the information I received at the IU on Friday, yes.
Contract's four years. Well, wait a minute, you're counting last year, huh? Fifteen sixteen.
Is the last year of the contract, Mr. Holt?
No, that, that's when it'll, it'll be negotiated, your contract, fifteen sixteen.
Well, you answered my question. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, um, when I made a comment, uh, about the SAT scores, it was said to me, do you have them? And, uh, yeah, I do have them, and in the past, I could always call the high school and talk to the principal and say, can I have the SAT scores, and he got them for me right away, Mr. Krawcheck was wonderful, went to the guidance office, got them for me, but I understand now, I'm not allowed to talk to him, so I have to make a public request now for the scores, I only got, I only went from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand ten, so we need to update these with two thousand eleven, and two thousand twelve should have come in this month, so there should be two more years going on there, and, uh, I do have a concern about this, I, I hope they're better, um, again, if you look at that peak, two thousand three, two thousand four, do you know what happened that year? Started teaching to the P S S A. I also would like to share something with the board, and I did all this at my own expense, there's a, a group called the Education Advocate, no, Josie, that's true, I did.
Okay.
The Education Advocate, and.
We're supposed to trust each other, you don't have to tell us that and stuff.
Well, I'm not sure everybody plays by the same rules, that's the problem. Anyhow, um, it contained, one of the pages that I copied, that I thought was, um, very informational, was, it's a review of the Keystone exams, which I thought you might want to look at, it's that column on the right, it says, here's what parents and students will see in the way of changes, and I, I think it does a, a pretty good job of explaining it, because we, I get questions about that, anybody else get questions about the Keystone? I get them, and, um, the thing that's not on here, and Tim, maybe you can help me with this, isn't it true if a kid keeps failing, 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 they can do a project and pass?
Yes.
And that's not on here, if, if a kid keeps failing, failing, failing.
And that, that hasn't been defined yet, what that other thing is.
Yeah, that's not in here.
That is out there in, in the legislation.
But anyhow, I thought it might be something that the board would be interested in, because of course, we're, we, we are moving to that right now, are we not, Tim?
Yes, Keystone's, uh, first ones will be given in December.
Yes, December.
Yes. They're not graduation requirements yet, but.
Does the junior take them, or the senior take them?
Uh, juniors will be taking their first, uh, ones in, uh, the, the juniors that have already completed the courses for which the Keystone are based, they will take, take their first Keystone in December, but the ones that are, are presently enrolled in the course will take it at the, towards, more towards the end of the school year.
I guess you all saw the headline in the Independent Observer. And, and the reason that I'm concerned is it goes along with those SAT scores, I'm really concerned about the high school. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm simply saying that as a citizen, as a parent, as a, as a human being, I'm concerned about that in terms of what's happening there, because this is not one year, this is two years, this is two years, and I'm sure, you going to address that?
Yes.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to ask is about finance, um, so far, the only two plans that I see, I know, I am aware of, is the one given by Mr. Altman, myself, and the one given by Mr. Salem. Are you going to, your plan, your plan includes tax increases every year?
What are you referring to?
That chart, there's three charts, scenario one, two, three, okay?
That really wasn't a plan per se.
Okay, could you give us something else that, that's, you know, you had said that before, and I know Gail said it too, can you prepare something? Can you prepare something else to show us?
You want a long-term projection of?
Well, I'm the one who wanted the five-year plan, but that was shot down too. So I would like to see something that shows what's gonna happen to us over time because we are responsible to keep this district from going bankrupt. And those scenarios were very scary. So if you could prepare something that shows us, shows me that we're gonna be okay. But again, if it's gonna contain huge tax increases, you're gonna go for exceptions, spell it out, tell everybody in advance what the plan is. Because if you're gonna go for exceptions, you're, you just, you'd raise the index and then however much more you want, and you just keep doing that. And if you're using the fund balance, we need to know how much of that is being used up. I, I just, this is October, we start on our budget in January. And I just thought if we had a plan, because like I said, Ken and I had a plan. I've asked the others, if you have any other suggestions, please do it. But I would like Mr. Salem to give us something. I would like that. I don't know if the rest of you would or not, but I'm, I'm concerned about the future.
One of the unknown variables is the level of state contribution. The last couple of budget years, the state has not increased their contribution. Prior to that, the state had modestly increased their levels of contribution. In this plan, what should I use?
This is what I think. The last time you did it, you kept the, the contributions steady. If we're losing students, we get paid by the, by the student A D Ms. If they're going down, I don't think our state contributions are gonna stay the same, or are they?
You know, I've only been in the job for a little over a year. It's been my experience that the level of contribution will remain the same.
Well, you have to use your judgment then. You're the business manager. But I would like to see a plan that is not bankruptcy.
Well, should I, again, should I, should I show a modest increase in state subsidies? Should I show a flat level of state subsidies, or should I show a decrease in state subsidies?
I would say a decrease. Increases in pension costs.
Right, okay. Well, you're hearing this from one member here. And, and what I would like is to have this as part of the regular budgeting process for next year, to look at it. And, and using your best judgment, bring us, bring us what you think is a viable plan for the next year, if you can add to that. But I'm, I'm reluctant, in, in some ways, I'm, I'm reluctant to, to say. Well, I don't have much more to say than that, but, but I'd like to see this as part of the regular process that we have in looking toward the budget in, in two, for the next year.
We do that every, every year.
Yeah.
And it's always too late. We have to rush, rush, rush. What we're asking Bill to simply do is tell us what he foresees. You know, if it changes, it changes. But use the steady, use the, the flow, the reimbursement that we got this year, based on that. If it goes down, we're, we're in worse shape. If it goes up, we're in better shape. But present us and the taxpayers with what may be anticipated in the upcoming year. And, and that gives us a chance so that when, when January does come around, that we can be, we will already have some ideas of what we might be able to do to adjust the budget.
Ken, doesn't that help us decide about this VOTEC commitment?
That too.
You've got a, you, you're looking at another major. You're giving them back our refund. You're giving them back our money. Which is the same as taking it from us. I mean, they're just taking it from us instead of giving it to us.
I don't think it has to be anything complicated, Bill. Just something that gives, gives us all an idea of what may happen. You know, I'm not gonna hold you to anything. Give us the worst case, give us the best.
No, do not, I, I would, I think that is the problem, to give a catastrophic kind of a worst-case scenario.
Well, that's what we're headed, Levi.
Well, that's your interpretation. That's your-
No, that's his shape. We're gonna be, we're gonna be using all of our funds.
That was based on flat funding from the state.
Oh, you're saying we're gonna get more?
I really do. Yes, I do. If I look at what the population of this state has said to the governor during the past two years, education, public education is a high priority. I do not foresee flat funding for the next two or three years. I, I see an increase, and I just have a disagreement with you on that because I also read the polls. I, I know where, and, and public education is a high priority. And, and we may, and we can simply disagree, but what we do then, if we force someone to say flat funding or disagree, well, then we can make catastrophic kind of statements about our, our school district. And, and frankly, we have a fund balance and we're well-managed, and I, I, I don't, I don't want to set us up for that. That's what I see being set up here.
I disagree with you. And you are basing yours on the premise we will get something more. I'm basing mine on the fact that we will not, or the premise that we will not.
You can do three. One even, one high, one low.
Yeah, you can do all three. So let us know what you face.
I think we need to let the man do his job when he needs to do it.
That's right. He needs to do his job.
I don't think we should be pressing him to do something towards odd.
He needs to do his job. He needs to do his job.
We haven't heard a word out of him since he made his presentation. Where are we headed?
Maybe we should get our crystal ball out of the horn.
It doesn't make a crystal ball, Gil.
The variable, there's too many variables.
We told you you were gonna vote on tax raising. What did we get? A tax raise. It's not a crystal ball. We know it's coming. We told you you were gonna raise taxes and you did.
Okay, to stop, to stop the argument, we're gonna put this on your agenda for next week to see if we want Mr. Salem to do this.
What? It takes a board motion for the man to do his job?
So do two board members run the whole board?
Before his own job.
Do two votes run a board of nine?
You said, you said your committees do, your committees do, Mike. Your committees do. Your backroom committees.
I'm not saying you don't have five votes.
Your backroom committees do.
Folks, I would like to suggest that we try to maintain a, a modicum of civility. I find it very insulting to suggest that someone isn't doing their job just because he, he may not be presenting something that one individual or two individuals is requesting. And I do find it insulting to say that he's not doing his job.
Well, I don't really care what you think about what he's, and he's all, I want, we're paying this man to do a job. We don't hear nothing from him. We ask questions. We don't get answers.
But I'm asking you for a modicum of civility, whether you care or not.
What is not civil here? I'm asking questions that I think I'm entitled to an answer, and you and him won't give them to me. Now, what other recourse do I have?
I would say you're loud, angry.
You can say whatever you want, but I want answers.
Demeanor is less than civil.
Damn, he didn't refuse to do it. He didn't refuse to do it.
How else are we gonna ask? We've been asking for two or three years for the right thing and it hasn't come out. So my demeanor, you know what? I don't care whether you like my demeanor.
That's obvious. Let's move on. Does any other members have any questions or comments before we move on to state of the schools? Is that a threat?
You just said anytime I want you, I can come get you. Well, you know what? I'm not afraid to take you up on it. I might be an old fat man, but what you just said to me sounded like a threat. Come and get you anytime I want.
Six thirty-nine Keystone Street. Yes, sir. Well, it's okay. In his absence, Dr. Molnar asked that I present our State of the Schools presentation. Since it's, it's already twenty after nine in the evening, you may be interested in knowing that Jack really worked hard on his presentation. When he turned it over to me, he had eighty-three slides. And I knew it'd probably take probably one and a half to two hours to get through it. I tried to give a condensed version and I'm going to do much less. And maybe Jack will want to follow up either at a board meeting or some other venue in the future. But I will try to get some information about how we are doing as a school district. If you want a summary, a quick summary of how we're doing as a district, we're doing very well. And I'll show you we're doing very well on our achievement, and we're doing very well based on how others are doing in comparison to others. As a district, we're doing very well. In a nutshell, the other side of that is we have some areas of weakness, and our major weakness is our performance at Southmoreland High School. And I'll, I'll show you specifically what that means. First of all, we have changed our district mission. It's five powerful words, something that we really believe in, high-quality learning for all. And we're gonna continue to, to deliver that across the district, not just to our students, but the things that we do as adults as well. These are things that we have previously showed you. We wrote our district goals based on these. This is who we are at the Southmoreland School District. We will implement the three big ideas of professional learning community with fidelity. Those three things are a focus on learning. We'll do that through developing our collaborative culture, and we will focus on results. We will demonstrate respect and belief in students through the promotion of effort-based learning. We'll talk a little bit more about that. In red, things that we've added to our goals that have been board-approved. We will create the conditions that promote the ongoing job-embedded professional learning, vital to the continuous improvement of educators. And we recognize that effective effort is the main determinant of achievement, and will constantly promote effort-based learning in our practices, policies, and behaviors. Things that we want achievement-wise. All students to successfully complete every course in every grade level on local, state, and national assessments. We want eighty-five percent of our students across the district to be proficient in reading, ninety percent in math, eighty percent in science, ninety-two percent in writing. Those goals were based on our, our present levels of performance across the district. Also, working to eliminate the gaps in student achievement that are connected to socioeconomic status. We've been very successful with that. And I E P status, we have been much less successful with that. In other words, our, our special education students. Some recognition that we have recently received as a district. Pittsburgh Business Times last year recognized us as the eleventh most overachieving district in the Commonwealth. And we've seen that before. We've been on the list for a couple of years. Our high school, based on our two thousand ten data that was used in the two thousand twelve U.S. News report, they awarded us our bronze level, our, the bronze award. And if you remember, to get the bronze award, that essentially looked, looked at schools that were doing, performing higher than other schools similarly situated, high-poverty schools. And then we just talked about this today, the process at the middle school's going in to be a national breakthrough school. And we'll wait to see the results of that. Presently a semifinalist, and, and as Vince said, we'll find out in November if they actually win the award. So right to the data, the things that we are held accountable for, we're held accountable for attendance. And across the district, we have met our target and therefore adequate yearly progress. Our most recent data that is available, ninety-five percent of our kids across the district attend school on a daily basis. This is district data. Across the entire district that, that is tested, grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and grades eleven. You can see what the performance target was in ten, eleven, eleven, twelve. It's going up. What is it? Can someone tell me what it is this year? Twelve, thirteen? In math? Thank you, ninety-one. And then obviously, under No Child Left Behind in two thousand fourteen, one hundred percent of our students are supposed to be proficient or advanced. So across the district, last year, eighty-eight point two percent of our, our students were, were proficient or advanced in mathematics. And you can see that compares. I always liked, in comparison to what? In, in comparison to others, seventy-five percent. So we far exceed, even though we're, again, about that fifty percent economically disadvantaged threshold. And we're being compared to, to schools that are poorer than us, schools that are much wealthier than us. Out of the five hundred districts across the Commonwealth, you see that we far exceed the performance in mathematics district-wide. Among our economically disadvantaged students across the district, target's the same. You, you don't have to meet a lower threshold just because students are economically disadvantaged. The, the performance target is the same. We met the perfor, performance target. You can see there's really not that much difference between the performance of our economically disadvantaged students and the whole population. And that's something that we have worked, that, that we used to have a significant difference. And you can see among economically disadvantaged students district-wide, we have an enormous performance gap between our other state counterparts. And that is something that, that really does stand out about our performance. Special education students, again, the, the targets don't change. We're still expected to have seventy-eight percent of the kids be proficient or advanced, even though these students have learning disabilities. Our performance is nowhere near what our overall performance is. Across the district last year, about sixty-five percent of our special education students were proficient or advanced on the P S S A math. And you can see, again, it's an enormous gap between how we perform and how the rest of the state performs in terms of students with I E Ps. In reading, different performance targets, seventy-two and eighty-one. This year it will be?
Ninety-one for reading.
Ninety-one for reading?
Eighty-nine for math.
Eighty-nine for math. At this point, when you're about up to, to a hundred percent, we just know we have to do well. And you can see across the district, we, we performed at that target, eighty-one percent. Our reading performance is not, is lower than our math performance in, in this district. And that's something that stands out to us, and we have made targeting interventions in reading and targeting reading performance a priority in the district this year. But again, eighty-one point two percent of our students across the district are proficient or advanced in reading. And again, once again, way above the state average. Economically disadvantaged students, close to our eighty-one, we have seventy-five point eight percent of our economically disadvantaged students proficient or advanced, and again, twenty points above the state average in that category. District science, again, a thirteen, about a thirteen-point gap between how we do in the district. Kids in science are tested in grades four, eight, and eleven, four, eight, and eleven presently. And across the district, seventy-four percent of the students are proficient or advanced in comparison to, to the state average of sixty-one point five percent. In district writing, eighty-one percent of our students proficient or advanced in comparison across the state was seventy-three point two percent. across the state was seventy-three point two percent. And here's the how are we doing piece. As you can see, as a district, we're doing very well. But if you break it down further, those red areas that you may not be able to read, this is our status under No Child Left Behind. What it says, in our ninth to twelfth-grade span, which is our high school, we did not meet AYP status in math. We did not meet it in reading because our performance was not high enough. And then when you go down to the very bottom of that, and we'll support that a little more, what that does is, because our high school did not meet the performance targets in reading and math for the second year in a row, our high school is in school improvement one, under No Child Left Behind. And that kicks in some things that we have to do as a district to write a plan and get a plan approved to show that we're either going to meet those targets at the high school or make progress towards meeting those targets. At the bottom, why the district itself is in the warning status for this year. Southmoreland School District is in the warning status under No Child Left Behind because our graduation rate among our economically disadvantaged children did not meet the eighty-five percent threshold. And if your high school, and what the state is trying to tell you, and I think rightly so, graduation rate isn't a high school issue, it's a district issue. So if your graduation rate doesn't meet the threshold, then your district doesn't make, meet AYP. So, what's that, Josie? Eighty-five percent is what they're looking for, economically disadvantaged and overall. They don't differentiate and say, hey, just because you're economically disadvantaged, you could have a lower percentage of those kids graduate. It's all the same. And right now, it's eighty-five percent.
Does it mean, if the number is rolled versus graduation?
They, okay, Levi, that's a very good question. Three years ago, they changed the model, and now they call it a four-year cohort model. Under the old model, you could have a child who put a fifth year of high school in. And maybe because they struggled, they failed some classes, but they wanted to stay in school and get their diploma. And that would not be counted against your graduation rate. Now, under the cohort model, that same student that is staying in your program and in your school, gaining and earning their high school diploma, that's great. We'll give them their diploma, they earned it. But that student, even though they graduate, will count against our graduation rate. Because now they use a model that is a four-year cohort, saying, hey, you got four years. And also, you know, we have a lot of disadvantaged children that by state law can stay in their programs till they're twenty-one years old. So again, those students would affect our district graduation rate. But again, you know, we're not trying to excuse that. We understand that we have to get eighty-five percent of our students to graduate under the rules that are given to us. And that's what we're working towards.
Are there figures anywhere of the ratio of IEP students? Of what percentage of your students are IEP students, like, over the various districts? Like, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, the percentage of our students that have IEPs?
You mean, does it, is that number anywhere where you can compare it to this one and this one, this district and that district? What percentage of IEP students they have compared to us? Because it seems like a lot of IEP students move into this area because of economic reasons or whatever reasons there are.
Right. Dan, I think our district percentage is around thirteen.
Thirteen percent.
And there is a way of doing that, Mike, on the PD website. I don't know anywhere that it's just listed as a percentile, but you can go into any school district, into their test results, take the number of IEP kids tested versus the number of kids tested overall. And you can, we can do the division and figure out that percentage. So that is possible.
Would you have, like, an idea of what other schools in the area would be?
I think our thirteen percent is a little bit above the state and national averages. I don't think it's significantly higher.
Thank you.
So in the other grade levels, I haven't broken it down into, like, the elementary school, the middle school. They're all doing very well. I showed you how we're doing as a district. Stopping, I am showing you at the high school, because this is where we are having our issues in performance. In mathematics, the performance target was seventy-eight percent. And last year, sixty percent of our students were either proficient or advanced in mathematics. That obviously did not meet the target, and that is a second year, second consecutive year of decline at the high school. In reading, again, the target in reading last year was eighty-one percent. At the high school, our eleventh graders, sixty-seven point six percent of our eleventh graders were proficient or advanced. That did not meet the AYP target. That is our second year decline. The high school went from warning to school improvement one. And that is our present status. Having said that, in looking at a little bit of history of the district, just going back to where we started this process of trying to improve student learning through our collaborative process. The red is how we were back in two thousand and seven. The blue is where we are now. You can see that at every grade span and in every school, we have improved significantly from where we were. Obviously, you can look at it and say, but it hasn't been enough at the high school. We understand that, and we're working towards those issues. But this, one of the reasons, we're looking at some conflicting data. Yeah, we're successful, but in other areas, we're not, we're not being successful. We're being flagged under No Child Left Behind for not making adequate yearly progress. And we're just trying to give a full picture that, yes, we are. But overall, we've made significant process, progress in those things. Getting back to our graduation rate a little bit, the eighty-five percent is the target. You either have to hit eighty-five percent, or you have to be showing, if you're a school that has a low graduation rate, you have to be showing dramatic improvement to make AYP. So that's where we are in ten, eleven, our most recent data. Eighty-five point one-six. We met the target overall. We're not held accountable for special education students because we have fewer, a population of fewer than forty. You have to have more than forty kids to make it a statistically significant sample size. And then in red, that you may not have been able to read, was our economically disadvantaged, seventy-four point six. And that's why the district is in warning status this year. I do want to point out, I think something Mr. Miller was alluding to. Dropout rate and graduation rate are not the same thing. So our dropout rate is only one point five seven percent. So obviously, you can see it's much different from what we're being told are the requirements for calculating a graduate. So what is our reality? Last year, you know, essentially, for the second year in a row, about ninety percent of our students across the district are proficient or advanced in math. Eighty percent of our students are proficient or advanced in reading. And this past year, it was essentially the same thing. So we kind of flatlined a little bit last year. We have some areas that have shown decline. Reading achievement in the district remains a concern. And again, as I pointed out, our high school is in school improvement one, for the reasons that we discussed. Education is very important. We were at a conference this summer where these facts were given to us, and our principals, our high school folks are talking to the kids about it. If you want to talk to a kid about why they should be in school, this really resonated with me. Grade retention is a major predictor for dropping out, has a negative impact. The next thing, one point three million students dropped out of high school in the U.S. last year. That comes out to seventy-one, one hundred and fifty students every day, one student every twenty-five seconds, if you want to look at it that way. Nationally, approximately thirty percent of students who enter high school will drop And here's where it really resonates, hopefully, with young people. Dropouts earn thirty-three cents for every dollar a college graduate earns. They earn sixty-six cents for every dollar a high school graduate earns. They are more prone to ill health and live shorter lives. They are less employable in a volatile job market. And their children have only a one in seventeen chance of earning a college degree. So what are we really focused on this year based on our data? Well, one thing is, we want to make students, place students more at the center of our collaborative efforts. And this year, we're adding what we call effort-based learning. It's research-based. And essentially, if you try to really summarize what effort-based learning is, is trying to create a culture in our schools and within our students that they understand that, hey, what you're doing is important here. You can do it, and we as adults are not going to give up on you, even if you give up on yourself. And we're basing those effort-based learning initiatives all across our district, from the primary center all the way to the high school. And it really is, it's all about mindset. By the end of the school year, all of our district teachers will have participated in book studies with their principals. Currently, our administrative group is reading Carol Dweck's Mindset. She's a Stanford University researcher, Carol Dweck. And again, what is mindset? Well, she, her research defines two main types, fixed mindset and growth mindset. People with a fixed mindset, they feel that their ability to learn is a static trait. Some students are smart and some are not, and that's kind of that. Not only kids, but also the adults that work with kids. If an adult has a fixed mindset, then an adult would think that their ability is something that you're kind of born with, and you're really not going to improve upon that very much. Growth mindset, ability to learn can be developed by various means, through, for example, through effort and instruction. Everyone can learn, and everyone can learn at higher levels than they ever thought they could, if we approach it the right way. And that's what we believe. She also says that students perform better in school when they and their teachers believe that intelligence is not fixed but can be developed. Teaching students that intelligence can be grown is especially powerful for students who belong to typically stereotype groups. And growth mindsets focus on effort and motivate students to overcome challenging work. What else are we doing? We're continuing to develop our collaborative culture. And again, how we define it is how Rick DeFord defines it. Systematic process in which we work together interdependently to analyze and impact our professional practice in order to improve our individual and collective results. We've added something this year, in addition to all the teaming that we're doing. One of the things that came out of our administrative meetings this summer is we have developed individual student learning plans. It's kind of like an IEP for a regular ed kid. And those are being implemented K-12. We're identifying our non-proficient readers using the data that we have already. We're identifying who our non-proficient readers are. And then through an individual student learning plan, we are targeting specific skills that need learned, and strategies, and also ideas for assessment to measure the learning and growth that has taken place. And that's a big initiative for us this year in our schools. The interventions, one of the, one of the major ways that the intervention will occur will be through our intervention period that occurs during our school day. Yes, absolutely. So also, you know, we went to a conference this summer administratively. We listened to a very dynamic speaker that talked about running to the problem. We've kind of adopted that administratively. In other words, don't gloss it over, don't hide from it. When we identify an issue that needs addressed, let's run to the problem and try to break it down, try to figure out what we need to do, and let's fix it. Principals have made time during a school day for vertical and departmental meeting time. In other words, for example, at the middle school last year, we didn't have nearly, we had sixth-grade meetings, we had seventh-grade meetings, we had eighth-grade meetings. And we had them a lot. We had them three times a week. We had many fewer sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade math meetings where all those teachers would get together. Sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade English teachers meeting. You know, we did them during our faculty meetings and in-service days. But what Vince was able to do through his schedule, that, those meetings have become a regular part of the school day, and they are occurring once a six-day cycle. So we figure, if we know that we have a problem area in reading performance across the district, then maybe we need to put more often our reading teachers together so they can work on the interventions and the individual learning plans and all the strategies that we have identified that we need to work with. Intervention and enrichment is now, in our second year of something that is occurring K-12. And administratively, we are working with the teachers to make it much more effective, systematic, more prescriptive. And again, through our collaborative process, the team learning process, the data, the research, best practices, we work together to investigate those things and try to use instructional strategies and methods that are going to get us the desired results. Principals are working with teams across the district to use the data, identify building and department needs, and how best to address them. Put a lot of effort into it, and in some areas, we see the results. In some areas, for example, like the middle school, you see the results year after year after year after year. District-wide, we've seen the results. We have some issues. It's not just a high school problem. If I got into it, you know, we have some fifth-grade reading issues, we have some sixth-grade reading issues where performance lags compared to how others are doing. We're aware of it. We've identified strategies to work on it, and we're moving in that direction to, as best as we can, to our ability. It's about the kids. We're not doing it for ourselves. I really respect the work that our teachers are doing, respect the work that our administrators and principals are doing with them. And I think people work hard all across the country. Sometimes you have to wonder if we're doing the right work. And I hope we are using our data to identify the right work that needs to be done so we can begin to show the results that we need to show in the areas that we have identified. That is the state of our schools for this year. Thank you. Questions?
Curriculum for the math, is that something that, I don't remember when I saw the one we did it, or is that something that you would look into?
You know, something that we are aware of in, you know, in studying performance across the state. You could say, well, our math is higher than our reading because everybody's is. But when you look at it, there's no correlation. Many districts, reading performance is higher than their math. So we truly have one of the strongest math programs district-wide in the Commonwealth. Reading lags ten points behind math. We know it. It's something that we're dealing with in this district, is improving our reading performance. We're going to continue to work very hard. It's not everywhere. You know, eighth grade, ninety percent of those kids are proficient or advanced in reading. It's not everywhere, but when you, when you put it all together as a district, eight out of ten kids, you know what, Josie? It's funny you say that. Back in two thousand and three, I was a principal of Southmoreland Junior High School, five out of ten kids were proficient in reading. Five out of ten. And now, I'm so frustrated that only eight out of ten kids are proficient, you know? And that we're on our second year of not being able to grow that. And that we're on our second year of not being able to grow that. So we try to keep it in perspective, but it doesn't really, I don't think, none of us are satisfied.
So these kids are waiting at the middle school, lying, just lying. Have you identified what happened?
Something that, if I could, if I thought I could run through the wall and actually make it through the wall, I would do it. Because something that, as someone that really pours over the data, as the assistant superintendent, that you have, you have a school. And let's, you know, again, let's, let's be honest, you have a school that may win a national award next month. Only ten schools in the country. And then by the time those kids get to eleventh grade, they're not performing. We are, we are working in a incorrect system. We have identified that. And here's what we identified last year. And again, this isn't an excuse, it's a frustration, but when you take a group of kids and finally say that ninety percent of you guys have all the data to show that you are advanced, you should be in our highest math course. What, what we did traditionally, and really what happened all across the country, when kids go to high school, they get to pick what course they want. So even though we had a kid that all the data says you should be in the highest course that we have in ninth grade, we allowed more than half of those kids to pick our lowest And if you pick the lowest course in ninth grade, you can't get back on the train because you lose learning. So when you get to tenth grade, you pick the lowest cour-, and then when you get to eleventh grade, and then you take the test. Last year, that process was reversed. We kind of started looking at it like the medical profession. If you have a patient that has all of these symptoms and you prescribe the wrong thing, they call that malpractice. If we have a student, you are, hey, you are advanced in math in third grade, in fourth grade, in fifth grade, in sixth grade, in seventh grade, in eighth grade, but then in ninth grade, because you have dance class and cheerleading and you, and you play soccer, that you make the decision to take a lower class, we always allowed that to happen. Last year, we ended that practice, and we said, we have an ethical, educational, we can't commit educational malpractice. If our data, if your data says that you should be in advanced modern geometry, then we're going to put you there, and we're going to support you to be successful. We start, so those kids that we started that with are, Dan, what are they now? They're sophomores?
Uh, juniors.
They're juniors. Okay, so that's, that's.
Tim, so if you really want to make something, you do it on the Keystone exams, make sure that everybody takes that out when they're in grade.
Well, and that's, that's, that's what we're.
So they'll look wonderful, because then if they go on and stop worrying, they'll still look wonderful.
And again, another frustration is just the rules we have to follow. Our eighth graders this year will take the PSSAs in March, and then in May, they'll take their very first Keystone. Because that's when, that's when we're giving it. So, and then they'll, they'll get to take that score and put it in the bank for eleventh grade. So it's a lot of testing for, I feel bad for the kids, but it would be nice if, at some point, the state will replace, you know, they say, okay, we'll use your, if you take the Keystone, we'll use that for AYP. And you don't have to, but right now, as long as we have to use PSSAs for AYP, then we also have to give the Keystone.
But then so until grade eight now, right?
Yes.
It stops, so.
And really, it's unfair to the child to give them the course in eighth grade, or in any grade, but then not have them test for that course also. So if you're going to take algebra in eighth grade, then we need to, we need to take the Keystone.
But then how will we ever know what's happening then in those upper grades?
Well, you'll, you'll know because of the Keystone reporting. So when students take biology, you'll know how well we did, what percent of our kids passed the biology Keystone the first time they took it.
But if you give algebra in eighth grade, we'll never know again what happens to them.
Well, actually, they, they will continue, there's a systematic adoption of courses over time. Right now, speaking of algebra, one.
Yeah, but we won't know that, and we won't know anything about their progress from that time on. Once they pass that algebra one class in eighth grade, we're never going to hear again.
Well, they'll have to pass the modern, they'll have to pass geometry, and then algebra two, or the other two maps, but eventually.
They're at, they're adding Keystones, but they're, they're starting online with the three?
Starting with the three, and then every couple of years.
So eventually, we'll get some reports, but we're off to a lot.
Yeah, I think about twenty seventeen, when they plan to have my share of, of what's at the place.
We're using a break, so we won't know what happens here.
Are the consequences if, if in another year, for example, on the graduation rates and the other dropout, but whatever it was there in the whole school? What are the consequences if we do not meet the expectations, I guess it's a no child left behind?
Good question. We're in school improvement one. So what we have to do now is, under, under supervision, we have to put a school-level planning team together. We've done that. We're going to, and there's, you have to fill out your school-level plan and have it approved by the Department of Ed. And then you have to implement your plan, and you're going to be supervised along the various phases of your plan. So that's where we are now. If you continue not to show progress, you go into school improvement two, and then you go into corrective action, one and two. And at some point, you have to, you have to notify your community, your families, that they can have school choice. I don't know anywhere in the state that that is, we have schools that are in corrective action, action two, and have been in corrective action two, but it just, they, it seems to be kind of an abyss that you just fall into. But yes, there are consequences.
How, how, do we know if they're not given the PSSAs again, how those students, how are they going to take you off that warning or whatever?
That's, that's a wonderful question. The biggest, the biggest, and Dan and I talked about this recently, because, and again, I'm, I'm not complaining, I'm not whining about it, but the worst time to fall into school improvement is right now at the high school. Because if we would have been in school improvement a year ago and, and made progress on the PSSAs, which we already know, that would have been much easier than being in school improvement, and now we have to make progress, but we've never, we don't have a baseline of Keystone performance. We have no idea what to expect.
So will you stay on that for a number of years until your criteria comes up?
You know what, and Mr. Al, the, PD has no idea either. I mean, this is a question that they would love an answer to also. They're, they're going to, we're going to figure it out as we go along. Because how, how can you match up your poor PSSA performance with now how you're doing with Keystones in the first year? I don't, I don't know.
But Tim, we were in the same situation last year, right? With that school.
War-, at the high school warning, because we're in two consecutive years of not, of not, two consecutive years of not meeting the threshold or not making progress in math and reading.
You've got two awards.
Yeah, the high school award was based on Dr. Fike on a two thousand and ten data, which is what U.S. News and World report. If you go back to two thousand and ten, sixty-nine percent of our students were in math, seventy-five in reading. And, and those numbers were significantly higher than other high-poverty districts. And now we're on a two-year decline.
And you can't force kids to take a class at a one grade.
Well, you know, but you know what, we're trying, in, in one, in one essence, I do agree with what you're saying. We're trying to change the culture where kids understand that they should challenge themselves at the highest level of learning, because it's just the right thing to do. If you have, if you have a kid that, that their data says they can take advanced placement calculus, then, then by all means, and they know they're going to be supported to be successful, that their teachers are going to work with them, you know, growth mindset, you can do it, we believe in you, then, then we want the culture where.
What I hear all the time, I'm not going to take it because I'm going to fail. I'm going to take this easy for some, I get.
Well, and I.
Isn't that all? And that's the fixed mindset, Dr. Fike, that's the, that's the system, unfortunately, we work in a traditional system where, for many years, it was all about what grade you got, not necessarily how well you learned it, right? So it was the competition for points and so on.
We all remember being in high school where you tried to set up your senior year. I did it. I took some, a couple of less challenging courses as a senior in high school. No one ever, but here's what I do know, and we talked about this in our book study, if I had that one adult who would have shown me the other path, taken me aside and said, hey, Tim, what are you doing? Why did, why did you not take Spanish four, as, which I didn't, as a senior? Why did you take this class? You, you can do Spanish four, you just don't want to, and if that one adult, whether, you know, would have showed me that path, I wholeheartedly would have taken, I thought it was perfectly acceptable to just not take Spanish fours. I took Spanish one, two, and three, wasn't that enough?
Are you talking to the kids?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's really trying to make a cultural shift.
That's going to come through guidance, very vague and sketchy.
And, well, yeah, yes, absolutely. Dan has them involved, absolutely.
It's also just, again, it's changing the way that we talk to kids overall. It's easy.
The parents too.
Yeah, and that's a good point.
Encourages kids to do that.
I think that's an excellent point. It's not, you can't focus on one group and not have that conversation with everyone. Hey, if we're really serious about getting kids to learn at high levels, parents have to believe that you're serious, kids have to believe you're serious. And they'll know that by your actions and not just by.
Send stuff through.
And encouraging kids in your class to try things that are difficult. Example, this game is a good one. As a high school.
They're terrified of something.
And, or they're terrified, or they're terrified of failing. So the easy thing is, it's an easier course, right? I'm guaranteed to get a good grade, everybody's happy, I get the keys to the car one sixteen or whatever the reward is, right? We've created a structure where it's more important to get the grade than it is to show you that I learned it. And then ultimately, what happens is when the real challenges come in college, we need to know that we've prepared kids well.
We need to challenge us kids, because when Oliver Burkhardt came here, she said, I'm getting remedial reading in that, and we need, we need to tell the kids, you want to go to college.
Have to be ready.
You don't want to waste your time with those credits.
Agreed.
Be ready.
Especially with the cost of higher ed, as it stands now. Higher ed is a remarkable system, I'd say.
Need a motion to adjourn for personnel and tax litigation?
Okay.
Second?
Second.
All those favorably, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?